Good evening. Welcome to the Pacifica City Council meeting, July 25, 2016. Call to order, please.
Councilmember Keener?
Here.
Councilmember Nyheart?
Present.
Councilmember Irvin?
Present.
Mayor Protam O'Neil?
Here.
Mayor DeGree?
Present. We will now have the salute to the flag, led by me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Closed session report.
There's no closed session tonight?
Thank you. No special presentations. We go to consent calendar and we have, we do need to pull, I think it's item number nine, because Councilwoman Nyheart has, cannot be in the room when we vote on that. Is that the right one? Yes.
I'm just going to recuse myself from it, but she took care of it for me.
Yes. And then, so, is that it? I think that's it.
I could be in the room.
I have a light. Councilmember Keener?
That was, that was my concern also.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that.
And so, we're going to have it at the end of the meeting? Is that right?
Yes, I think it would be, because you have to leave the room.
She doesn't have to leave, does she?
You can just go in the car.
I can just go in the other room.
Go in the closet.
Well, what's your pleasure, then? We can do it immediately, or?
Let's just do it now.
We'll do that at the end. Okay.
I was actually going to recuse myself, for reasons that we always do.
Mayor Protam?
Since it's suddenly.
I second, I move that, well, not trying to steal from John, but I move that we vote on the consent agenda as amended, and then take item number nine immediately afterward.
Okay, and before we do those two things.
Do you want to get a second?
A second?
Oh, I thought we did have a second. I'm sorry.
I'll second, or if you want to.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you. And before we do those, I would like to read the letter, and consent item number.
We need to have a vote on that?
No, before the vote, she wants to read.
Oh, excuse me.
The letter that is part of the vote.
Number eight, actually. The letter, I'm just reading the letter that we're voting on, so that everybody knows. There's been a lot of, a lot of work on this, months and months of work, and many of our residents have helped me and attend all kinds of meetings with the San Francisco Roundtable, numerous meetings, and meetings with Jackie Speer's representative, Kathleen Wentworth, who is a retired pilot. And so, we worked with maps and all kinds of research, and came up with this letter, which is why I would like you to know what it is. And we can have it on our website, I'm sure. So it's to the FAA Regional Director, Administrator Glenn Martin. Dear Mr. Martin, I write to you today on behalf of the City Council of the City of Pacifica. Pacifica is one of the first members of the San Francisco Roundtable Airport, and has been an active participant since its inception in 1981. Our current representative has been a participant since 2002, and is well aware of the hard work and dedication of members to ensure that the Roundtable mission was consistently clear and steadfast. That mission is safety in the air and quiet skies for neighborhoods below, without shifting noise impacts to member cities. In the past, aircraft generally flew higher over Pacifica and mostly over the ocean. Historically, it was only our northern neighborhoods that were affected. Since NextGen, the entire city of Pacifica is under constant assault by aircraft noise. Pacifica residents are irate that their years of endurance and participation in the San Francisco Roundtable have resulted in significantly lower flights and a higher percentage of flights over Pacifica, from San Francisco and Oakland. These and new flight paths down the entire spine of Pacifica have created a substantial deterioration in the quality of life throughout our beloved city. The San Francisco Roundtable expected NextGen to enhance air travel and result in quieter skies. Instead, it has caused neighborhoods to be severely impacted by constant aircraft noise. Residents are experiencing extreme health issues due to the low, incessant, and loud aircraft noise. Roundtable members are shocked that their mission to create quiet skies has been thwarted by flight paths over residential areas. Flight paths should not prioritize the concerns of airline profits over the health concerns of the vast population on the ground. NextGen has moved aircraft over residential areas throughout the San Francisco Bay Area that previously passed over the ocean, the bay, and non-residential areas. San Francisco Roundtable members and residents everywhere challenge the underlying reason for such a negative change. We expect both safety in the skies and an equal dedication to the protection of health and safety of the residents below. We urge the FAA and the airline industry to fly higher over the city of Pacifica. Direct most flights traversing Pacifica over the ocean and non-residential areas. Research the feasibility of waypoints that direct traffic significantly off the Pacifica coastline. A potential WHALE waypoint, five miles out due west of Pacifica's most southern and most western point. Remove any and all low-altitude level-offs for all runway 28, 28L, and 28R, straight-out departures. The FAA is the voice of protection for the American public, both in the skies and below. The American public does treasure air-flight opportunities. We also treasure our peace and quiet. We are concerned that the airline industry may be more interested in saving time and fuel than respecting a basic quality of life for our specific neighborhoods. We trust that we have Congress and FAA to champion our safety and quality of life in the skies and in our neighborhoods below. The harsh health impacts in our neighborhoods demand immediate relief. The results of our research listed above are positive changes. Sincerely, signed, the mayor. And our Congresswoman has picked up on that and sent a letter directly recently, pretty much incorporating what we have said here. So I thank all the residents, and thank you for hanging in there and letting us know. We are keeping tabs on everything, so. Councilwoman Nyheart?
I also wanted to thank you for the "by right" letter to the governor.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, sorry, I just want to thank you for your efforts. I know you've worked very long and hard on bringing people together and having these meetings, and ensuring that everybody and all our citizens were heard, and I think you've done a really incredibly good job doing what you can for the citizens, and persevering. And again, thank you for the letter. Thank you to Congresswoman Jackie Speer for her assistance with these efforts as well. And, you know, it's very important for our citizens, so thank you.
Thank you, yes. And as I said, I could not have done this very difficult task alone. The residents have been extremely helpful, and it's not over. Okay, so, we're good?
We're good.
And we are now going to vote on the consent calendar, with the exception of item nine.
We're already up there.
And that passes. And so now we will.
And I'm recusing myself because of 500 feet in distance on item nine.
I move that we now approve item number nine on the consent calendar.
I second.
Okay. We'll call for the vote. Are there, these are just, these are, yes, that passes with one recused. And these are just, okay. All right, thank you. All right, onward. We are now on oral communications. I see two cards.
One card?
One card. This means you can talk about anything that is not on this evening's agenda, so if anything else comes up, please step forward, bring yourself, bring a card. This is, Kelly, I mess up your name every time. Kelly Bogdanov, say it for us, please. I need to practice. Oh, say it, please.
It's a tough one. Bogdanov, or Bogdanov. I bet that confuses you even more.
I'm going to find you.
There are two pronunciations, and you can choose whichever you like. My name is Kelly Bogdanov, and thank you, Council, for hearing me. I'm a resident of West Sharp Park, and clearly, the last two council meetings about the Bond Library issue have underscored how important the seawall is to this neighborhood and anyone who enjoys the promenade. We now have confirmation from one of the leading coastal civil engineering firms, if not the leading firm, Moffett Nickel, that the wall along the north side of Beach Boulevard is indeed a retaining wall, and not a properly constructed seawall. And by the way, thank you, city staff, city manager Lori Tinfo, and whoever else was involved in commissioning that study. It was neutral, objective, and data-driven. The seawall is a fiscal issue. Do we want the city of Pacifica, in other words, the taxpayers, to be responsible year in and year out for the financial liabilities associated with the ongoing upkeep of a retaining wall that was not designed to withstand Pacific Ocean waves to begin with? Or do we want to respond to the overtures that federal and state agencies have already made to our community to build a new, properly-constructed, sturdy seawall that could last for decades to come? I guess there's a third option, the so-called managed retreat option. I presume that would end up being the costliest option of all, not only for the residents and businesses of West Sharp Park, and the thousands of people who enjoy our promenade, beach, and pier, but it could be terribly detrimental for City of Pacifica finances. I've heard all of you speak thoughtfully, either at council meetings or campaigning, about city finances. We have the opportunity, because of last winter's El Nino, to improve our city's long-term finances by potentially eliminating upkeep liabilities of the retaining wall, and seeking federal and state grants to build a new wall that would not require the same upkeep. Please place the seawall on an upcoming agenda, so we can begin exploring how to preserve West Sharp Park's beloved coastal areas.
Thank you. Mike Bell? And so far, I don't have any other, again, this is for anything not on the agenda.
Thank you, Council, for defending our constitutional right to vote. I think we need to revisit our recusal policy. Using a person's home address to remove 20 percent of our council to rule on items important to the entire city is too simple-minded. It just invites political shenanigans and the delivery, possible delivery of grossly unfair rulings. Thank you, city manager and staff, for doing an outstanding job of defending our city and working so hard to make Pacifica a much better place for everyone to live. Thank you also for wisely enlisting the engineering firm of Moffett and Nickel to bring objective reasoning and science into the discussion of sea-level rise and practical management of our coastline. Their scientists and engineers specialize in the planning and design of urban waterfronts, ocean fronts, ports, harbors, marinas, inland bays, and river fronts, all based on a scientific understanding of sea-level rise and sedimentary migration. The findings they presented last Thursday night quantified the reality of sea-level rise. However, the information they presented contradicted the semi-factual and wildly presumptive claims of coastal inundation being fed to us by a group of Pacificans whose real motives, oh dear. Did I leave?
All right, let's get, oh.
Where was I? However, the information that they presented contradicted the semi-factual and wildly presumptive claims of coastal inundation being fed to us by a group of Pacificans whose real motive should be questioned. Here are a few of their findings. One, inundation of West Sharp Park is a possibility if sea-level rise continues at its current pace, and if we have a 9.0 earthquake that generates a giant tsunami during a nine-foot-high tide. They calculated that this had a once-in-a-thousand-year probability. This analysis was supported by FEMA and U.S. Geological Services in conjunction with their own scientific research and map overlays. Two, the biggest threat to West Sharp Park is actually flooding, beginning at the south end of Sharp Park Beach. This could occur if the earthen berms west of the golf course were not properly maintained. Three, the wall north of the pier along Beach Boulevard is a retaining wall, not a seawall, and it is at risk of catastrophic failure if it is not vigilantly and constantly maintained or replaced with a real seawall. These findings are totally at odds with Councilmember Keener and his supporters' pseudo-scientific plan to initiate managed retreat by abandoning all maintenance, every project, and every person living and working in West Sharp Park. I am asking Council to put an immediate end to this reckless agenda. And Sue, if you want to write a nice letter to Jackie Speer about this issue, we would really appreciate it. Thank you.
Is there anybody else? Seeing none, I will close the orals, and bring it back to Council Communications. Any lights going here? Okay, Councilwoman Keener?
Yeah, it seems like we were just here.
We were.
The only thing I have, or that I want to highlight, is this Wednesday at 7:00 at Sharp Park Library, Peninsula Clean Energy will have a workshop for the citizens of Pacifica. And, you know, I invite all of you, attendance is a little less here tonight than it was the last couple meetings, but also all of you watching at home, if you're watching this instead of the Democratic Convention. So Wednesday night, 7:00 at the Sharp Park Library, Peninsula Clean Energy. Thanks.
Thank you. Mary, Councilwoman Nyheart?
Yes, just a couple of quick things. This is the month that most of the large committees in the county take a break, so the TA, Transportation Authority, and the City and County Association of Governments didn't meet. But that starts again promptly next week, so we will be back at it, and I will tell you a lot more. I did want to thank everyone that came out for Relay to Life. It's an amazing event, and each and every time that that happens, it really brings people together and around a very important issue that has taken way too many people's lives. So I thank everyone that contributed and participated, and Tammy Dale, and all of the volunteers that helped. It was an awesome project. Awesome.
Thank you. Councilwoman Keener, or Karen Irvin, I'm sorry.
Oh.
No, I can't read. K E.
Okay. All right. I know, it hasn't been too long since I last spoke up here, but I had an Economic Development Committee meeting held last week or the week before, and it was a great meeting. Again, the budget was presented, and what I really appreciated about the meeting was that we all kind of just talked about our vision of what economic development in Pacifica means, and what we really have to do. We talked about Beach Boulevard project, and Palmetto Streetscape, and some of the exciting projects. We talked about the library prior to understanding that we had to do a repeat, but there was a lot of real excitement and enthusiasm for the many projects that we have going, and people felt very inspired and motivated to really, you know, move some of these projects forward. So it was a great meeting, and I, again, want to thank the people on the Economic Development Committee. They're really putting their heart and soul into pushing our community forward and doing what we can to enhance the quality of life for citizens in our communities. So thank you to everybody that attended that. And I am going to be attending our first Library Advisory Committee. It's also on Wednesday, so multiple things going on, but I'm really looking forward to the meeting with the new advisory committee, and I appreciate so much the fact that they are willing to join this committee and help make this a reality. So that's on Wednesday. And that's at the, I'm not even sure where it's at.
It's at the Community Center, and it starts at 6:00.
Okay, great. Thank you. And again, I did also want to extend my appreciation to all those that were a part of forming and working on the Relay for Life. It's an amazing organ, you know, event that takes place every summer at Terranova High School, and it is just so inspiring and just beautiful, the people that get out there, and, you know, really are respecting all the survivors and those who have lost their lives to cancer, and that are pushing forward. And the fact that we have more hope today than we've ever had in the history of our fight against cancer is very hopeful and, you know, just rewarding for all of, for all the efforts that have been put forth so far, and we'll continue to keep fighting against this dreaded disease. So thank you again to everybody that was part of that.
Good, Council, Mayor Protam O'Neil?
I was going to mention the Library Advisory Committee, but I also, we just got a yellow card from Brent Hitts, and I believe this is on the consent item. We've already passed it, so we can't talk about it now.
It just come up?
Yeah, he just, I just got it delivered, so.
Okay, yes, the Relay for Life is always quite an event, and it is not an easy thing to put on. It's also very morally, a moral support for all of our residents and their families or friends who are suffering or have suffered from cancer. So, and it's every year, and the folks that put it on are extreme hard workers, and I look ahead, try to come. It's very satisfactory, gives you great satisfaction and comfort in spite of the humongous challenges, and it's a great support for people that are suffering, so. And it's not a somber, mopey deal. It's upbeat. Yes, the Economic Development Committee has also been meeting in different venues, and we met at the Sanchez Art Center and learned, you know, how to, the whole committee had a better look at the cultural events in Pacifica. And then we met at Florrie's Bookstore, and also got some very good information from that business perspective, and I don't remember where we're meeting next, do you?
That's a good question.
It'll, it won't be, we're used to meeting the police station. Now we're moving around. I think it might be actually in Fairmont somewhere. I don't, I'm not sure that's determined, but anyway, stay tuned. The double-slide ride, it's actually a cycling event and a run, was held again in Pacifica, and we had folks from the Netherlands and Scotland. And how they found out about it was, you know, doing the Google thing, and they saw that it was in Pacifica, and then looked and saw the beauty of Pacifica, and they said, we wanted to do that. They're all crazy to do these two things. They're marathons, and they go straight up the hill, and, you know, they come back puffing and panting and aching and saying, wow, that was great. They're strange people.
And they're 150 miles or something, like that.
Oh, yeah, it's the half marathon, which meant you looked up, the run was from San Pedro Valley Park, which is beautiful in itself, but the announcer was saying, you know, he did a great job out there for special needs kids and all for parka, and then he said, you're going up to those cables. So I leaned over to see where the cables were, and I asked him, you mean those way up there? He goes, yeah, but the ones that just took off before them are going to go up there twice. So, but they also have an easier one.
Is it on flat land?
No, an easier one. That one was quiet. I didn't even hear too much about it, but, but anyway, it just shows, I was very grateful for the city of Pacifica. They love Pacifica. They said Pacifica was a great, great place, not only beauty-wise, but that everybody around town was friendly, so thank you for that. I think that's it. Okay, so we're good with, so now we're for staff communications.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Glad you're safe here. Public hearings, we don't have a public hearing, so now we're on consideration, and we have 10, 11, 12 items. I mean, those are the numbers of the items. So the number 10, one is consideration of the Elections Code Section 9212 Report analyzing potential impacts from the Pacifica Initiative Amending Ordinance 391-C dot S to authorize a future rezone of the quarry, which could include residential development under certain conditions, and action to either adopt the ordinance within 10 days or adopt a resolution, submitting the initiative petition to the voters at the regular municipal election to be consolidated with the statewide general election on November 8. Proposed action, consider and file the 9212 report, adopt the attached resolution ordering submission of the initiative to authorize a future rezone of the quarry, which could include residential development under certain conditions, without alteration to the voters at the regular municipal election to be consolidated with the statewide general election on November 8. Staff report, please.
Thank you. My name is Tina Waremeister. I'm the Planning Director. So as you mentioned, the item before the council is consideration of two possible actions regarding the Initiative Amending Ordinance Number 391CS to authorize a future rezone of the quarry, which could include residential development under certain conditions. And to simplify, I'm just going to refer to that as the Quarry Initiative or the Initiative. The two possible actions for council to take is to, one, adopt without alteration the Quarry Initiative and not send it to the voters in November, or to adopt a resolution submitting the Quarry Initiative to the voters in November. To be clear, the council does not have the option to not place the initiative on the ballot in November, or to not adopt the ordinance. To better inform the council and the public regarding the possible impacts of the proposed initiative, the council directed staff to prepare 9212 report and answer questions submitted by the community. Since any future development of the quarry site would be of great community interest, staff and our consultants put in a considerable effort to present meaningful information that will be useful to voters, and answered 385 questions submitted by the community within the statutory 30-day timeline. So I just wanted to pause and acknowledge Associate Planner Christian Murdock, the City Attorney's Office, as well as our consultants who are here, who put in basically all the work to prepare the 9212 report for the council. The 9212 report studies the maximum build-out under the initiative, but was unable to analyze multiple development scenarios, due to the time limit to prepare the report, their speculative nature, and the large amount of possible variables. So at this time, I wanted to introduce our consultants Karen Majors and Libby Seifel, who will review their methodology for the report preparation and be available for questions. And so just to conclude my report, staff's recommendation is to file the 9212 report and to adopt the ordinance submitting the Quarry Initiative to the voters in November. So I would invite Karen up first. Karen Majors?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. My name is Karen Majors, and I had the pleasure of being part of the team that put together the 9212 report that is in front of you this evening. Matthew Visick, Assistant City Attorney, and Libby Seifel made up the core team. Our work on this report would not have been possible without the support of your incredibly dedicated executive team. I also want to acknowledge the prompt feedback that we received from the Water District, both school districts, the Fire District. All their feedback and prompt response to my phone calls says a lot about the way you're, all the people who provide services to this community work together and relate. I was retained by the City Attorney because I have over 36 years of local government experience, particularly in the areas of planning, community development, economic development, city finance, and general administration. I've had the pleasure of being retired for the last several years, but I do enjoy taking on some work like this to kind of keep my fingers in the pie. I also have a master's degree in city planning, so cities are something that I love, and it's always fun, too, and interesting to be able to work in a new community. My particular focus was Sections 1, 3, and 5. Section 3, Section 1 is simply an introduction to the report and what's going to be in it. Section 3 looks at the, this mixed-use project through the lens of the city's planning documents. So I, in a crash course on everything Pacifica, I reviewed the, your existing, your current approved general plan, circulation element, housing element, Rockaway Beach specific plan, zoning ordinance, as well as, it was also very helpful to look at some of the pipeline documents you have, which is what may someday become a new general plan, and the draft EIR to that. It gave me a lot of great information. Section 3 identifies areas in which a mixed-use project, such as the one described in the initiative for the quarry site, may be consistent with your existing documents, and what may need to be amended, modified, if the initiative is approved and a project moves forward. Similarly, Section 5 looks at how and a project moves forward. Similarly, Section 5 looks at how a mixed-use project, such as the one described in the initiative, might impact local services in the community. And those services were water capacity, sewer capacity, storm drainage, roads, emergency services, parks, recreation, and beaches, and library. As Tina has mentioned, and Libby will reiterate, I'm sure, it was challenging to assess a theoretical project, a one in which did not have, we did not have the benefit of all the many documents that an actual project proposal would supply us all with. And so I think it's a testimony to all of us and to all the people that provide services in your community that we were able to pull together as much information and give you as much factual information about what, you know, what are some of the likely things. We believe that we have provided you with, like I said, some good factual information at a very high level to give your, both you as well as your community, an idea of what such a project on the quarry site might look and feel like. So, after Libby makes her presentation, be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. So like Karen, I was also retained by the city and the city attorney, and I've also had the pleasure of working with Karen in the past in some of her former positions for cities. I am an, also a trained urban planner and an economist. I've also had the pleasure of working for Pacifica, though it's been many years now, because I worked with your former redevelopment agency here on several of the projects. I've been an economic and planning consultant for more than 30 years in California and I've advised more than 80 cities and counties across California. And I take on these nine, these election code reports very infrequently, but for great clients like you that are able to come together and provide information in rapid fire, because these projects are always very quick, I have to say, this is the absolute quickest 9212 report I've ever done, from start to finish. And as Karen said, we've tried to be as neutral and factual as possible, given the time constraints that we were under. And we apologize in advance if we didn't understand something about your community, because as I said, it's, it was really a matter of being a quick study. So to give you more specifics about the analysis, to build on what Karen said, since the initiative doesn't specifically provide for a development program or, it provides for maximum build-out, but it doesn't actually specifically provide for a specific plan for the project or an exact development program, what we did is we identified two potential development scenarios to evaluate. The scenario as it exists right now, or the existing condition scenario, basically assumes a continuation of the quarry site as it is now, basically vacant, because that's been the condition that it's been in for several decades. If we had had more time, more resources to do, you know, more market analysis and site planning and development programming, we most probably could have come up with some idea of what a developer might do under the, under the 1983 land use regulations that were, were adopted by the city and that basically prevent any residential development from occurring on this site. But since we didn't have the time to do that, we're basically assuming zero on the site. With the initiative, we are assuming maximum build-out. So basically, that allows for the provision of approximately 200 residential units, approximately 200 hotel rooms, that includes 12 bungalows along the oceanfront, 35,000 square feet of retail, and 35,000 square feet of office. And that is the maximum envelope that is allowable according to the initiative. We then did a very quick and dirty market assessment to understand the potential type of development that could occur with the initiative, and more importantly, what would be the most relevant assumptions for us to use in our fiscal analysis, which I'm going to explain in a minute. We also analyzed the city's budget, and again, want to just thank and acknowledge all the work we got from the planning team, the finance team, and the city manager, and the Economic Development Department to help us understand your budget. Again, we're, we're trying to be quick learners, but we may have missed something. And then we evaluated the impact on the city's budget from the potential development that would be allowed by the initiative, and we compared that to the existing condition of what there is right now. Before I tell you about the fiscal analysis, I just want to give you some background on the market. Some of this may be quite obvious to you since you, you all live here, but I think it's important context. So first of all, on residential, there is a very strong market for residential. As you know, job growth has been incredible over the last five years, particularly in Northern San Mateo County and in San Francisco and Silicon Valley. And in Northern San Mateo County, which is really the market within which you reside, there have only been 300 multifamily apartment units built. So there's been a very small amount of supply relative to demand. Now that's market rate, that excludes affordable housing that has been built during that time period. And what's happened is the rents and the prices of homes have increased dramatically. Just to pick a statistic from Trulia, the sales price of homes in Pacifica has increased more than 10% since last year. And similarly, apartments have increased dramatically. So over the past couple of years, the rents have increased about 20%. So your typical rents within your community are about $3.50 per square foot, and that's for older apartments. You have about 1,000 apartments and they were built around 40 years ago, or 40 to 50 years ago, really. So the initiative scenario to include residential from a market perspective is very viable. And from the standpoint of what might be built there, what we're assuming based on evaluation, given market rents for new product in Northern San Mateo County, leads us to believe that the units would be valued at about 480,000 per unit. We also did an assessment of what would the affordable housing part of the, the initiative piece be, the restricted rents and 20% of the units that are multifamily units. So basically, 20% of about 180 units would be affordable. And the value of those is about half, 240,000 per unit, when you look at the restricted rents and the values that would be, come out. The next land use we looked at is hotels, again, an extremely strong market. San Francisco and San Mateo are ranked third in the United States in terms of both occupancy and average daily rates, which is the way that hoteliers refer to average room rates. In Pacifica, you have six hotels with 274 rooms. And according to your, your own Economic Development Department and some of the studies that have been done recently, your room rates have also increased pretty tremendously over the past few years and are now in the $200 per night range. And you have about 75% to 80% occupancy at your hotel facilities. You're not overbuilt. We also consulted with your consultants on Beach Boulevard and Barcadero Hospitality, and they provided us with great insights into the hotel market here. And in addition to that strong market, you have a very unique oceanfront site. There are just no, virtually no, if not none, other than this site that could offer a hotel operator ocean views and ocean access. For example, the Ritz Carlton in the Half Moon Bay gets an average daily rate of $535 a night. That is a luxury resort, but that gives you an idea of what the upside might be. In the last two years, for very nice product, what is often referred to in the industry as select hotels or upscale hotels, sold for between $360,000 to $500,000 per room. So what we're assuming for our analysis is an average daily rate of $275 that reflects standard rooms at $262 a night and bungalows at $475 a night. The bungalows are very large 2,500 square foot units, 75% occupancy. And when you do the calculations, evaluation calculations, you're, we're getting a value of $350,000 per room. So a pretty strong value. But we were also told by a number of hotel, of hotel consultants we talk with, that it's not unreasonable to get values in the $350,000 to $500,000 range, as was indicated by the market data. The next two uses are retail and office. What I want to say first about retail and office is that they are going to be most viable and most competitive if they're part of a larger mixed-use development that can complement those uses and create in essence a there-there, as the industry likes to refer to it these days. So by having other uses around it, there is a synergy that gets created. For example, when people move into homes in Pacifica, they generate more buying income, because they will purchase retail items at your existing shops and at the potential new shops. You would also have the benefit of the visitors that would come and stay at the hotel. According to your economic development plan, for every visitor that comes to town, about $150, and it may be more like $200 per day of visitation gets spent within a local community. And that's related to some statistics that San Francisco put together. And if you add all of that up, you come up with approximate valuation for the retail space of about $350 per square foot. And we think on a conservative basis that that would be about $300 per square foot in retail revenues, so sales revenues at those businesses. The businesses would likely consist of restaurants and, and specialty retail stores that would generate sales tax. And then last but certainly not least, though maybe the toughest of the four uses to pull off is office. However, there is a very strong demand for office space in North San Mateo County, and rents on average are about $42, full-service gross rent. And offices are trading in around the $450, $450 per square foot range right now. For the assumptions that we've used in the analysis, we're assuming that it would be about $350 per square foot in valuation and rents would be about $35 or $36 a square foot. I, I know I went into quite a bit of detail on those assumptions, but I wanted you to understand that we actually did some very thorough thinking and analysis. And we were very fortunate to have on our team the Concord Group, who has done a lot of prior market research in Pacifica and is very familiar with the Bay Area market. And that's included as an appendix to our analysis. So our next step of our analysis was we looked at the fiscal revenues that the city receives. And according to your 2016-17 budget, the city's revenues are projected to be approximately $31 million. Of those revenues, about a third are generated by property taxes. And the city receives on average about 24 cents of every dollar that is collected in terms of property taxes on properties within Pacifica. So basically, you get 0.24% of the value of any new development that occurs. For sales tax, you generate, right now comparatively, sales tax is a much smaller part of your budget, it's about $2 million. And you receive 1% of all of the retail sales that occur. Those retail sales would occur both from the hotel restaurant or food and beverage that's in the hotel, as well as from the retail, the new retail. To be conservative for the analysis, we're only looking at retail sales generation from the 35,000 square feet of retail. But there could be some additional sales again from the hotel. And for transient occupancy tax, which represents again about $2 million of your budget, you get the biggest bang for your buck, because you get 12% TOT tax. So you get 12 cents for every dollar of room revenues that are generated within the city. So by far, TOT is going to be your biggest revenue generator from this potential project under the initiative. And then the fourth major revenue source is vehicle license fees. And those used to be calculated based on a population basis, but because of changes in legislation, they are now calculated based on growth and assessed value. So it's going to be proportionate to the amount that assessed value grows. So for purposes of the analysis, we looked at the growth in assessed value from new development, and we applied that against the $3.6 million in vehicle license fees that you collect. So to summarize all of this, the way our analysis looks at this is we take the development program, we feed in these market assumptions, and then we come out with what we think the potential fiscal revenues would be from those four major sources that I just listed. And that's all contained in the appendix tables to our memorandum, which is an attachment to the report. And then what we did is we looked at the fiscal costs. Basically, the city's general fund pays for basic services. And as Karen talked about, she, she did a very detailed analysis on what the service impacts would be. We looked at it just in terms of what the cost might be. And we just wanted to give you at least a high level, somewhat qualitative evaluation of what the, the fiscal revenues would be versus the fiscal costs. And so what we found out through working with your staff is that of the $31 million in revenues, which is, and you have a balanced budget, so $31 million in revenues and $31 million of costs in round numbers, about 23% of those costs are reimbursable. They're direct fees for service. Like for example, your recreation department charges for the use of recreational facilities and you recoup some of that money. The planning department charges for planning fees and bill, and the building department similarly. So about 23% of your, of your budget is considered to be recovered. That leaves you with net costs of about $24 million. And that will be important in a minute when I talk about the summary of findings. So in summary, what did we find out? First of all, the quarry site has been vacant for more than 30 years and currently generates about 11,000 in property taxes, because the current assessed value is about $5 million. So in its existing condition, if it continues in that condition, it will grow at about 2% per year. In terms of these major four sources of revenue, we anticipate that the quarry site will generate about $2.5 million in revenues to the city if it's built out at maximum build-out, like we talked about, the scenario that we talked about. And in, and the large part of those revenues is derived from transient occupancy tax. It's about 73% of that, or about 1.8 million out of that 2.5 million. And then the next highest is property taxes, then sales taxes, and property tax in VLF revenues. And one of the other things I wanted to point out is that the initiative provides for a new development that would potentially increase assessed value by about $180 million. And that $180 million is approximately 4% of your current assessed value within your community, which is approximately $5 billion in round numbers. And it will also increase if the, if the number of housing units were built at the maximum by about 1%. So when we look at fiscal analysis and we look at cost to the city, we usually look at, you know, residents often have the biggest, most significant impact on city services, because they're here in essence, more, more often, you know, more 24/7 as compared to employers and businesses. So if you look at those two numbers, if you think about the kind of 1% and the 4%, when you compare that against the revenue generation, we're talking about potentially an 8 to 10% increase in revenues that this project could potentially generate. So it's very likely, given that ratio between revenues and costs, that it would be very likely that this initiative, if it was built out to full build-out as proposed under the initiative, would have a positive fiscal impact on the general fund, because the revenues would likely exceed the costs. And the large reason for that, again, is that the transient occupancy tax would potentially approximately double what you bring in right now, because it would add about 200 rooms to your existing inventory. And those rooms would be at a higher typical average room rate, because they would be newer facilities, they would be more upscale, they would be meeting the broader business market, and would likely double the TOT revenues, which is the major component of the fiscal impact. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
So that concludes the presentation. Again, the recommendation is to adopt the ordinance submitting the Quarry Initiative to the voters in November. And staff and the consultant team are available for questions.
Thank you. Counselwoman Nyhart?
Yeah, procedural question, just first, if you don't mind. Do you want to... Do you want to take, because I have questions about the ballot itself versus questions we just heard a lot about the report. Is it okay if we intermingle those, or do you want them separate, or?
Does it matter to you?
No.
Just to be clear, this is a ballot question. This is a...
Yeah, okay. Perfect. So can I just start with the ballot? My understanding is that the initiative measure is printed entirely, correct?
Correct.
So all of the subpieces are in there?
Yes, the entire text of the initiative has been designated to be printed in the ballot materials.
But the whole reason this is on the ballot is about the residential units, correct?
Well, what the initiative measure will do is forego the need for a future vote of the people if a project is brought through and approved that meets all of the conditions set forth in the initiative.
Okay, so what you mean by that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try this until I understand it, all right? What you mean by that is, in fact, that because we don't have a project right now, we are putting to the vote of the people up to 206 housing units that can be approved through the regular council process if the voters approve it. And anything above that, according to the questions in here, would have to go back to the voters.
That's correct. And let me, let me try to make it even simpler than that. All this initiative does is eliminate a vote-of-the-people requirement that we have based on the 1983 ordinance. That is all it does. And then it goes on to say, if all of, the only way that voting requirement is eliminated is if a project meets all of the conditions in the initiative. So it wouldn't have to just meet the 206 multifamily unit requirement. It would have to meet all the other conditions that are set forth in the initiative.
Okay, so you understand why, including myself, we're confused by the ballot statement? Because you don't really look at the whole initiative, but it's the housing element piece. I'm wondering why we can't put up to 206 multifamily units and under the, and under the other identified conditions?
And let me explain why.
Okay.
Or why I drafted it in that manner.
Okay.
So there is, number one, a 75-word requirement. Cannot, the ballot question cannot be more than 75 words. Number two, the ballot question must be a condensed summary of the ballot entitled summary. So what that means is it must be a condensed summary of the entire initiative, right? So that's, those are, those are the legal requirements for the ballot question. So, and I had received these suggestions on how to revise the ballot question, including inserting language about 206 multifamily units. And, and I thought about this because that does seem to make sense. Here was my problem with that. And it's what I was alluding to in the beginning of this conversation, which is, that's not the only condition in the initiative. There are other conditions in the initiative in not just the obvious open space requirement and the retail requirement and the hotel requirement and other multifamily requirements, including 20% affordable housing. So my, my difficulty was in picking out just one of those conditions. So that is, that is, that was my reasoning in putting the ballot question in the manner that I did. With that said, do I, would I disagree with that language? No. I mean, if the council, it's up to the council. You are, you are adopting this ballot question. That was my suggestion. I just explained to you why that, that was my reasoning. But if a majority of you feel that that would be more clear to the voters, that would be acceptable as well. I'm just explaining to you what my reasoning was in not including one specific restriction and not all.
So we could, we could tonight change the language of the ballot.
Yes, you could tonight.
Okay. That's number one I wanted.
That's good.
Good. That's, that's great, actually. Okay. Then I have some follow-up questions for you because you just answered all my ballot questions.
Oh.
So, I mean, the big ones. I know you don't have a project, which makes it difficult, but you did a lot of financial analysis on the sort of maximum build-out. And I know that one of the things that people are going to be quite concerned about is traffic and traffic impacts and those things along the Highway 1 corridor. Is it possible to, because you addressed that sort of in the question parts, but basically said there had to be a traffic survey and they had to be, and I get all that. That's what's going to happen. But is there anything that we can give the public that would address the issue of if we built this all out, what might be the traffic impacts in that area? Who can answer if, is that even possible?
It's Tina.
Oh, maybe it's you. I was looking to her and them, but okay.
It would be, it would be very difficult to do that without hiring a traffic consultant and, and getting that study completed. Even, we would even need a traffic consultant to help us with the trip generation estimates, not even getting into the impacts, but just, just estimating how many trips it would, it would create.
That was, that was the, that was one of my big things that was sort of missing. It was kind of there, and it kept saying we had to get to it, but it's not really spelled out. So that's just one thought. And then the other thing I had a question about was, did I read this correctly, that affordable would come to 37 units out of the 200? That was it, 37? And we're talking across that spectrum to medium, moderate income versus low, and, I mean, we're doing all the spectrum as 37?
As we understand the proposal, the affordable, affordable units will only be in the multifamily, not in the live-work. And so that's where the, that's where the number gets down to 37. And based upon your, your ordinance, and again, we don't have that level of specificity, that it would be, based upon what your current document said, it would be across the, all the different levels.
Okay. I'll, I'll yield. Councilman Keener?
Yeah, my first question is, is about the fiscal costs, or just the fiscal analysis in general. And so most of it, you know, I have no issue with. And in particular, the, the TOT tax, I think that would be the major revenue generator for the city if, if, in fact, the hotel were built, which it's my understanding that it's not required. The, the place where I do have an issue is sort of in the property tax versus the fiscal costs. And the reason I've, I've called that out is because I've heard that cities basically pay out in fiscal costs whatever they take in, in property taxes, or, you know, fairly First of all, is that true, or partially true, or not true, or what?
That's a great question. So it varies a lot from city to city. Relatively speaking, you're what I would call a high property tax share city, meaning that some cities in California only get, say, five cents on every dollar, and you get about 24 cents on every dollar in property tax that you take in. So in that sense, you generate quite a bit of property tax for all the new development value that would occur. So the fiscal effect of new development based on property tax really varies from city to city, both because of the share of property tax and also because of the new values that get created. If you have higher-value property that comes in, so on average, the new properties are going to be worth more than, say, your existing properties, you'll get a more of a fiscal benefit on the whole from this location because it's an oceanfront location, because of what's being proposed there and the nature of the development. It's very likely that the assessed values will be higher than, as say, you know, another hotel in town, just to, just to say that. And because it's new construction, it's going to tend to have higher value. And so that, that's, that's true. What, in terms of whether just the costs, you know, the costs on your general fund would be equal to the property tax revenues that I'm projecting for this, is that, you know, to get to that particular thing? My guess is that you're, and this is a guess, this is a guess, my guess is that your fiscal costs would exceed just the property tax revenue generation on itself. But if you most probably add the property tax and the VLF, you know, the additional amount of VLF, and you were to add some kind of ratio for the extra spending that just new residents or new employees would bring, the little sales tax, you'd most probably be getting a lot closer.
Okay.
But when you get to the TOT, then you go to the real positive. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, and let me just summarize that then. So in the, sort of a big-picture guesstimate kind of thing, what you're saying is the property tax, sales tax, and VLF would probably get taken up as fiscal costs of the city to provide services to the new residents. But the transient occupancy tax would likely be free and clear above that. Okay. That answers, that answers that question. And, and now I'm on to questions about the questions, if you will. So, well, first of all, I just want to say you must be very appreciative of the copy and paste functions of a word processor. There must be 20 pages at least of, "The initiative does not approve a specific project," which is part of our difficulty here. I just had a few specific questions, and some of them are questions about my questions, which is maybe a little unfair. But so one question, it was number 146, and it's on packet page 179. And it basically asks, "What does substantially consistent mean with respect to the map in Exhibit A?" And you say the initiative doesn't define the term, and, and I think that's true. But I wonder if, you know, there's any case law or something like that that, that gets to this? I mean, is there any way to predict, you know, what the landscape will look like?
No, there is not a case that defines what substantially consistent means. But I will say this, most jurisdictions have somewhere in their planning, in their zoning code, a requirement that requires that it be substantially consistent. So that term has been analyzed quite a lot. The, the issue, though, is that it's a very fact-specific determination. So that it is something that, at the time that a project would be submitted through the process, it is going to be up to this council or a lower component, the Planning Commission, to determine whether or not, in total, the project is substantially consistent with whatever it's supposed to be substantially consistent with, and you brought up the map. So it is something that is, the legal standard, I would say, is whatever you determine in terms of whether or not it's substantially consistent or not, that decision cannot be arbitrary or unreasonable or capricious. So you must have valid bases for determining that it is substantially consistent or that it is not. Is that, that's, that's...
I, I don't know if that helps very much or doesn't help very much, actually, so...
It's a, it's an amorphous term.
Yeah.
Amorphous term.
Yeah. Okay, let, let's try another, another question. And this question was about the roads on the map, and you said basically that, it's the next one, 147. Yeah. And you said that the initiative doesn't address streets, roads, or parking in the same fashion that it addresses, for example, the location of the Quarry Village or other elements. So do I take that to mean that the, the elements of the Quarry Village, so that would be the residential, the retail, and the office space, those, those are fixed in, geographically? Okay? Those are fixed by the map?
The uses are fixed.
Right.
Yes.
And, and where they are located is fixed?
Correct.
Okay. And the same is true of the hotel and the bungalows?
Correct.
Okay. And that is because they are mentioned specifically in the...
In the map.
In the, in the list of...
Well, their, their location is specifically addressed in the map that's attached to the initiative.
Okay.
So that those uses must be substantially consistent with the location that's depicted in the map.
Okay. Then, then, but you say that the, the roads on the map are not, let's see, the initiative does not address streets, roads, or parking in the same fashion. And it requires the applicant to complete a traffic study. So does that include the road that is shown on the map? That, yeah. I, I mean, I want to separate that from the things that are not shown on the map that are maybe to be decided in the future by the traffic study.
And, and planning staff may have a different view of this, so I want to make sure that we get their opinion as well. The issue that I think you're raising with regard to, are they committed to a certain configuration for the road?
Right.
My, my problem in saying that they are committed to a certain configuration is because the map seems to be addressing, in my opinion, the location of the uses as opposed to the location of accessory infrastructure. location of accessory infrastructure. So I certainly think that an argument can be made that the configuration of the road is actually a configuration of the use. But I can also see how, if, if, just hypothetical, I don't know that this is in fact the case, but let's say that the configuration that is on the application is substantially consistent with this and is tied to that configuration. But following traffic studies and SEQA and other analyses, it's determined that that mitigation, I mean, that configuration is not environmentally sound for any particular reason, then I'm not sure that we would be able to make the finding that it's not substantially consistent because, in fact, their application was substantially consistent, but our mitigation measures required them to move it.
Okay. I think I understand that. I see a couple of nods out there in the audience that say they understand that. Anybody else? Okay, a few nods up here. That's good.
And let me say, just for the record, that this is a "we." We answered these questions. It wasn't just me.
Yeah, yeah, I understand, but...
Do you mind if I just ask a follow-up to...
Sure.
...point of clarification?
Yep.
So you're saying, sorry, but you're saying that basically, when this process comes forward, if this passes, if lots of things, that there will be mitigation that happens, most likely, and that may or may not move the roads as they exist?
It wouldn't be able to move the locations of the uses. I'm certain of that.
Got that.
But because the roads do not appear to be clearly identified as being required to be consistent with this map, I'm a little less certain about the applicability of their configuration. And so it's a different analysis.
Thank you, John. I'm sorry. Councilmember Keane.
Good answer.
You just made my night.
I think that's all for me for now. Thank you.
Councilwoman Irvin?
Thanks for those questions, because I had many of them myself, and great questions, and important for us to get clarity. It's amazing we have so many additional questions when so many have been asked, and it has been very helpful looking through those. I tend to see common themes, and I just want to ask on some of the very basic common themes, and these sound like basic questions, but for the people potentially listening, I want to repeat some of the really common themes that I see. And one is that nothing is required to be built. This defines the maximum build-out of hotel rooms, of residential, of conference center, of what potentially will be there, but nothing is required to be built, or no combination thereof.
I think that's correct. This initiative does not mandate that anything be developed. It also doesn't mandate that there be phases of this project developed in any order. So the answer is, you're correct.
And with that phasing question, and I know Mayor DeGruy had asked some of those questions earlier, can that phasing be part of the, if it passed? Could phasing be part of the Planning Commission's role? Could they require, as a condition of approval, any type of phasing?
Phasing, we would not be able to require a particular phasing. It may be that the applicant would submit voluntarily as part of their application a particular phasing plan.
Okay.
We don't have regulations in our zoning code that address phasing requirements.
Okay.
With that said, there are many developments that come through, perhaps some in Pacifica, but mostly I've seen it in other jurisdictions, where developers have agreed or requested And that is what we would need in this instance to condition the project with phasing.
Right. Because I think it's very obvious that one of the big concerns that people have is that we are going to approve this, and potentially, all we will get out of it is, for instance, residential housing, which potentially has the ability not to garner any profit.
And I would tell you that there's no guarantee that that would not happen.
Okay. So that's just, and is that something we can address during the planning process in any way? For instance, can the Planning Commission not approve a project for the fact that it doesn't garner, it's not a project that would benefit Pacifica?
That's a legal question.
Okay.
As the city attorney mentioned, we don't have an ordinance that addresses phasing.
Okay. So the short answer is no.
Okay, great. Another, so the other issue is that open space is a requirement. And then I saw on, I was confused by something written on page 126, and it stated that the map includes commercial development on at least 50% of the developable area.
I'm sorry, what question is that?
Oh, it's just page 26, 126. Sorry.
I don't have the number.
Was that packet page?
Packet page. I have to get...
Oh, packet page.
Packet page 126, number nine.
Oh, number nine.
Okay.
It's at the very bottom paragraph. And so at the very, very bottom couple sentences, it says, "It is important to note that the initiative calls for..." Are you there?
It's not a question, it's...
It's the report itself.
Yeah.
Right, right. It's the report. And I just want, I'm confused, because it says, "It is important to note that the initiative calls for 75% of the site to remain as open space. Based upon the development calculations prepared, the map includes commercial development on at least 50% of the developable area." So is that 50% of the 25% that's not open space? Or is that going...
I would ask Karen Majors if she could respond to that, since this was...
It's a bit confusing, because that was going back to the Rockaway specific plan as well as the general plan.
Okay.
And it basically, those two documents both required that of the developable area, 50% needed to be commercially developed, not the entire site. And it, you know, it is a little bit odd. But the calculation I tried to make was that it appeared visually and in terms of the numbers of square feet, that we had hit that 50% threshold of the area that could be developed.
Okay.
The 75% had nothing to do with that calculation. It was of the developable area.
Okay, interesting. So that's something that would need to be addressed.
So can I just clarify that, Karen? So you're saying that that note at the bottom of page nine is not intended to...
At the actual document nine? Page nine?
Yes, yes, the actual document, page nine. At the bottom of page nine, last paragraph, and the last half of that, last sentence in that paragraph, last two sentences?
Well, it's actually taken from the general plan source above. It's the last sentence of the source, general plan, page 75. Same sentence.
Right. And so my question is, that is not supposed to be a description or a further analysis of the 75% open space requirement?
Correct.
Okay.
That was just merely comparing those two, the two documents, the general plan and the specific plan, to the developable area.
Okay, thank you for that. Let's see. I think I've gotten most of my questions answered, just knowing that some of the concerns that people have that would go through the general review process that we have for every project.
Yes, so this initiative, as you mentioned, we were going to repeat certain themes. It doesn't approve a project, so any project that comes through would go through the normal approval process. And in this case, because there's legislative actions involved, it would involve not only the Planning Commission, but also approval of the city council.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Good. Okay?
Yep.
Mayor Protem O'Neill?
I got a couple of questions. You had said earlier that you did, the issue you had with putting that additional phasing in the ballot statement was because it picked out the one requirement. But the letter that we got from the citizen said that we were still like 30 words under the ballot statement. We were using 47, and we were entitled to 75. Could we add other stuff on there, other points?
We could, we could. But I was trying to balance the need to make the question as simple as possible while still trying to provide as much explanation as I could as to what the initiative was. So, you know, we could add more language, but I think the question for the council is, will adding more language make the ballot question more understandable or not? And I just, you know, I accept the fact that this is just my opinion, and after I've drafted, I went through many different drafts. I had 10 ballot questions. So this is the one I settled on, because when I went through that analysis of trying to include everything in there, when you read the ballot question, it's almost unintelligible. So I tried to make it as simple as possible.
Now, getting back to the point of phasing, you were saying that we cannot do, there's no municipal code section that says we can require phasing. My understanding, correct?
Correct.
Okay. But we can put in conditions. But can you put in a phase, you cannot put in a phasing condition then?
No.
Correct? Okay. But if they were to sell, once they get the entitlements, they can sell the property, and then those same conditions that we had on it would be fall to the buyer of the property, correct?
Correct. Conditions of approval run with the land?
Run with the land?
Yes.
Okay. And let's see, now, I'm having trouble with my computer here, getting the full agenda. But do you have page 235?
Yeah.
Or packet page?
Packet page 235?
Yeah. I'd just like to read it.
I had to print them out.
Okay, I read it, but it's...
I had to kill a tree.
Steve Jobs is not being nice to me. Let's see, I'm looking for the, maybe it's 233 or 34.
Oh, you're in the actual ballot?
In the actual ballot argument.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
There it is.
Okay. Okay, it says under, on page 233 of the actual ballot argument, it says here, "Permit no more than 206 units of multifamily housing within that area. No more than 181 residential apartment units, of which at least 20% must be designated as affordable for very low, lower, moderate income." And then, "No fewer than 25 units that would be designated residential live-work units." So I'm taking this to read, which is 206 plus 25, so a total...
No.
No? Because, but is not, this is...
No, because if you look at 5B, and you're looking at the initiative language itself, if you look at Section 5B, 5B is the...
Oh, it's a subset.
...overall restriction. So the overall restriction for multifamily is no more than 206 units. And then of those 206 units, this is the breakdown of those 206 units.
So 20 affordable and 25 live-work.
Correct. Well, 20% affordable.
I get 20%. Okay.
Correct.
Okay. So then, okay, that kind of answers my other question. But in her analysis, the live-work was included in the residential. Okay, okay. Okay, that was kind of like my thread of questions, actually. Thank you, Sue. I'm done.
Councilwoman Irvin?
It's a confusing question, I think, and I don't know if it could be answered. Could the initiative have been described or written in more detail to guarantee commercial, hotel, retail with the residential, to give more assurances to the public in regards to what the actual project was going to look like? Or because we are strictly voting on having residential, were they limited to just asking us about the residential?
There is no limitation on how the proponents wanted to draft this initiative.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Could you repeat that again? There was no... There's no restriction, there's no limitation on the wording of the initiative. They could have put, but that's a done deal at this point. Yes.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Keener?
So on the, on the conditions that the initiative places on the, on any development that can take place, isn't it true that of those conditions, only the residential development actually requires a vote, and all the others could be accomplished without the vote, but with the normal permitting process?
That's correct.
Okay. So that is an argument for the insertion of the language that would, you know, the up to 206 multifamily units of residential development in the ballot question, because that is the only thing that actually requires a vote, whereas all the other conditions that are mentioned do not require a vote and could be accomplished during the normal permitting process.
Yes, that is correct. And I'm just sharing with you what I thought when I tried to draft that language.
I understand, I understand.
And, no, and with respect to just including more information on the multifamily residential portion, where do you stop including the other conditions on the multifamily, which is they must be limited to the Quarry Village on the map? They can include 181 residential apartment units, of which at least 20% must be designated as low and moderate. So, you know, what portion of the restrictions do you want to include? But I answered your question, you are correct.
And you asked me a question. So I'm going to answer it. And I would answer by saying I would include only the 206 multifamily units, and the other stuff is obviously important, but it's not as important as the 260, 206 multifamily units, I think.
No.
Yeah. And this is down to a matter of opinion, but, yeah.
Correct. And I, you know, as I said, that discretion, I'm not going to tell you that by inserting that language that you don't meet the election code requirements. That was just my decision in drafting.
Okay, good.
Councilwoman Nyher?
Well, that was the original first question that we started with up here, and, you know, I'm still on the, you can include it as 200... know, I'm still on the, you can include it as two hundred and six and certain specific requirements in the initiative, right? Okay. I wanted to come back to traffic. And I have to agree with Councilmember Keener on the cut and paste function, but I do understand why. But on the cut and paste function, there was a recurring statement that I wanted to, to get clarified, and you can pick any number of pages on, when it came to traffic, but if the, I'll read to you, "If the city approves such a project, it would be the obligation of the applicant and not the city to mitigate the traffic impacts caused by the project." Are there any limitations on that?
Well, they, the, the impacts that we are requiring the developer to build or pay for, they must be directly related to the burden that their project is imposing. So, there must be what they call a nexus requirement.
And proportionality requirement.
So, that, that's the restriction.
And proportionality requirement.
So, that's why this was so difficult without specifics, although you do have maximums. I mean, you can make some assumptions about eighty percent occupancy in the hotel and what staff it might take, and the retail's harder, but...
The, the problem with the traffic is you really need a specific project in front of you in order to analyze the impacts, because you're gonna need a traffic study, you're then gonna need that traffic study analyzed by your traffic consultants, and then that analysis is then gonna get analyzed by your sequel consultants, and then that analysis is gonna get analyzed by your planning staff and your city attorney and your city manager. So, there are a lot of steps that you have to go through.
I was just, you had a lot of questions, understandably so, knowing that if this goes forward, you've got lots of questions that the public is going to be generating out there with lots of supposition and lots of fill-in-the-blanks and all kinds of things, and it would be nice to have some sense, but I understand, okay? And then, one last thing, it just occurred to me, redevelopment doesn't, because the successor agency is terminating, nothing that we're doing here impacts that in any way, does it?
No.
I don't think so, but I wouldn't, I just wanted to bring it up so we actually identified nothing, Michelle, that you know of?
No. We did actually ask ourselves that same question.
Okay, because we just hadn't talked about it publicly. And last but not least, the map goes with the, the land then? If it was sold?
Yes, correct.
Because it's part of the initiative?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so...
This is public input.
Oh, no, my turn.
I just wanted to be sure you knew that.
Yeah, so looking at the ballot and, and the other part, the questions, so the questions are, there's a lot of great work, a lot of work there. I had to take a break in between, just reading and absorbing. So, the questions are very helpful because in the educational time, once this is approved for the ballot. But the ballot part itself, so up to the two hundred and six part, that's good, I have no problem with that. But I guess when I'm reading it, and I need to know, if I go yes for this, what are the consequences? So, it's not clear to me that the consequence, and so am I clear, that no commercial is mandated. So, we're approving, yes, you can go ahead and have residential, but when you get that residential, there's nothing in this initiative that insists that commercial also has to happen, and the TOT.
Correct, there's nothing that requires that it be built. The only requirement is that the project that is approved must contain that element, or all of those conditions or elements that are in the initiative.
So, that's my question, so say that again?
So, the initiative requires that any project that is ultimately approved contain all of the elements contained in the initiative. If they don't, then that project would require another vote of the people. But, all the initiative requires is that a project approved have those elements. As we were talking about, there is no lever that we have that forces development. We can't force, if, once they get a project approved, we cannot force them to construct, nor can we force them to construct in any certain order. So, the question that came up earlier, could, under this initiative, if it is approved, and they get a project that is approved with all of those elements, hotel, retail, office, open space, and residential, is there a possibility that the only thing they will build is the residential? Yes.
That's interesting, I don't quite understand that, but, I mean, I understand what you're saying, I don't understand why if you apply for a project, that isn't the project.
Well, no, that, that, they are getting, I mean, that's what all project approvals, we cannot force the developer to construct the project. The only authority we have is to approve a project.
So, in other words, let me try this again. So, they submit a, a project, and all the components have to be there, but are you simply saying that they can apply for the project and then decide not to do it, which means they don't do anything?
Yep.
Which means they don't do anything, not just pieces?
Well, no, they can do pieces.
Okay, so, I'm all gung ho for this, and I vote yes, and I say, aha, we're gonna get commercial and residential, and that's that, obviously not.
You're not, you cannot guarantee that you will get all of the elements of the project. The only thing you can guarantee is that if they do construct, let's just say, a res, the residential component, that it must meet all of the requirements in the initiative and the project approvals.
So, that means they would have to have the commercial as well?
No, because...
Just the residential components.
Because that's all they're building. Remember, they have a project approval for a hotel that, that consists of, you know, it's, it's compliant with the initiative, but that doesn't mean that they're forced to construct it. And, and, but that's true for any project.
Okay.
That's not, that's not specific to this initiative, that is...
All right, so then, going back to making it clear, in, am I wrong in thinking that it would be helpful to say, this does not mandate commercial or any, this does not mandate the building of any other components? Is that acceptable to put that in to the language in the ballot?
Well, the, I, I would have a problem with that, because that is not part of the initiative. That is something, that's not written in the language of the initiative. So, the, the ballot question can only be a condensed version of the initiative. What, what you are referring to is some, is an effect, but not something that is actually written in the initiative. So, I would have concerns with adding that to the ballot question, if that's what you're referring to.
Okay, so, all, so when somebody says, what's this all about, it simply means that you are allowing residential, and once they get that permission, you, they don't have to come to the public anymore, and they can build it or not?
And, and, and remember, what the initiative is doing is just eliminating the voting requirement.
For how?
So...
Up to two hundred and six.
Correct. So, a project is going to have to go through the process, it's gonna have to be approved, just like any other project.
All right, so I'm, I'm just really trying to, to make clear consequences, but obviously I'm not allowed to do that.
Well, the, the, the issue that I have with inserting that language is that language applies not just to the initiative, but every project. So, there's, there's nothing unique about this initiative related to that issue that we are, we've just been discussing.
Well, it's unique in that a change is being requested, so start saying, well, why is this changed here? Anyway, okay, so I think, and then, I think I already asked, and you said that the initiative with passed would not affect or take away in any way the HPD overlay, is that correct?
That's correct.
That's correct.
Okay. I think that's enough for me right now, okay. Mayor Protem?
Okay, so basically what you're talking about is like with the last Planning Commission meeting, the Holiday Inn Express, there was a continuation of their permits, and that's what would happen, or could potentially happen here, correct? If they only apply for...
I, I'm gonna let Planning answer that, because I'm not familiar with that application.
Basically, what could happen here, they have an approved project, they don't build it, they could just keep getting approved and renewed the permits, correct?
You, you could renew your permits, it's, your permits could also expire, but there is no requirement that you submit a building permit and actually construct the project.
Okay, and second is, when they do a traffic study, the, if they did it in phasing for themselves, their own type of phasing, then each phase would have an, their own traffic study, correct? Rather than one traffic study for the entire project.
So, if, if you're, are you asking if the applicant comes in and proposes phasing?
No, yeah, the applicant on their own initiative builds the apartments, okay? And then, you know, a year down the road, that has a traffic study, those two hundred apartments. A year down the road, they apply for the hotel, you know, whether capital requirements or whatever, the hotel would have their own traffic study, correct?
Well, I think that what, what would likely happen is that the entire project would come in, potentially, and, and get approval, or at least the, the legislative actions would be there, and so the entire project would be studied and analyzed in the traffic analysis?
But what if he doesn't apply...
And then if...
...of projects at once?
If there, there is typically a way to assess out this, certain, which impacts are associated with which portion of the development, and then mandate that those traffic mitigation measures be implemented.
You said assess out?
Yeah, assess out.
That means just kind of like yank what you want out of it?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Assess.
Okay. Tina, maybe you could just take a step back and walk the council through what happens with a, a project like this? The application comes in, the staff analyzes the full application, and does a traffic study for the full application, right?
Correct.
And then, it goes through the process, if it gets approved, the owner can choose just to build part of it, right?
Correct.
But that's after the application has been approved.
Right.
And so, the full application would have the traffic study done for it, and you all would see that.
But, no, what I'm getting at, though, is, he does, the developer does not necessarily have to make an application for the entire development, correct?
He does.
So, he, so the developer will have to come in, in their application, and make for the apartments, the hotel, quarry village, the entire thing, all at once.
Everything that is, all of those restrictions or conditions that are included in the initiative, their application must include all of those elements. Otherwise, we would be saying, fine, we will take you through the process, but at the end, you're gonna have to take this to a vote of the people.
So, and if I could clarify the difference between the entitlement permits and the building permits? So, the entitlement permits, they would need to process the entire application, and what, what we have been talking about, that they may not build at all, is that at the building permit stage, they may only pull the residential or the hotel. So, so that's, and then, at the entitlement stage is where we do the traffic analysis.
So, the traffic study, if they apply just for the residential, but the traffic study would have to encompass the entire initiative, what's proposed in the initiative?
Correct, their application has to include all of the elements.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, we good? All right, so I'll go to the public comments, open the comments, and if anybody decides they want to ask or say something, just bring up a card. Scott Burkey, Nancy Morrison, Peter Lo.
Good evening, Mayor DeGruy, council members and staff. My name is Scott Burkey, and I'm a land use partner with a law firm, Cox Castle and Nicholson in San Francisco. I represent the developer of the quarry project. On behalf of the entire project team, I want to express my appreciation for all of the time and effort by city staff and the city attorney's office to prepare what I think is a very well-written, comprehensive, and objective ninety-two twelve report for the initiative. We agree with the report's understanding that the initiative itself does not approve any development or actual project on the quarry site, nor does it alone rezone the quarry. Instead, it gives you, the city council, the ability to consider a project that includes some amount of residential development, so long as that project conforms to the land use restrictions identified in the initiative. Several of those restrictions, I should point out, are actually, in some sense, thought of as project components, such as the open space requirement, for example. And it's for that reason that some of this back and forth relative to modifying the, the ballot summary, we would suggest that that not take place, that you not amend it to include an up to two hundred and six residential unit count, because that's only one piece of this larger project. We are, after all, probably gonna be submitting for a planned development permit, which is this integrated concept in land use planning, where all of these different pieces have an integrated and combined effect. So, to just single out residential is not, not the intent of the project that the developer is contemplating. So, just wanted to add that. But let me also point out the fact that built into the initiative is a safeguard that requires that any project with a residential component that does not meet the land use restrictions that we've been talking about, that must then go back to the voters before that project can be approved. So, what's important to keep in mind is that development on the quarry will still require city land use approvals and entitlements after and if the initiative passes. The ninety-two twelve report identifies key approvals that are required for the project, but none of those can be granted by virtue of the initiative alone. Those approvals can happen only after the initiative has been put on the ballot and approved by the voters in November, not as part of the initiative itself. Now, because of the nature of these approvals, the city will, and in fact, must evaluate the environmental effects of the project pursuant to SEQA, we've already talked a bit about. That SEQA review is required by law, and the initiative itself, I should point out, references SEQA. You can see that in sections three point B two E and three point B three. That SEQA review will happen as part of the entitlement process, which means that the project's potential environmental... May you just indulge me for one more minute or so? As project applicant?
You all right, people?
Yeah.
All right, as long as it doesn't go on forever?
It won't, I promise. Thank you, mayor. So, these environmental impacts must be evaluated, and any mitigation to offset those impacts must be identified before city council approves a project. So, that means that the public will have multiple opportunities to comment on the project as it moves its way through the entitlement process. This isn't the only night. That process, though, comes later. Placing the initiative on the ballot tonight doesn't approve any of those entitlements or preordain the result of the project's environmental review. This isn't a rubber stamp for any form of development on the site. This is only to give the city council, you folks, the ability to consider a project that includes a residential component and subject to land use restrictions that we think benefit both the community and the environment. Thank you very much for your time. We look forward to continued dialogue with this body, city staff, and all Pacificans about the quarry. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Nancy Morrison, Peter Lo, and Chris Scannell?
Good evening, everyone. So, I want to urge you to include the two hundred and six residential units in the, in the ballot. I think people need to be clear that that's what their voting are. We don't need to vote on a hotel, we don't need to vote on the other commercial development there, but the people need to know that they're voting on two hundred and six residential units, and with the current wording, that's, that's not clear.
I didn't hear your last statement, I'm sorry.
So, with the current wording, proposed wording, that's not clear, that, that there are two hundred and six residential units that is causing... That there are 206 residential units that is causing this vote to happen? Thanks.
Thank you. Peter Lo, and one more card came up, Brent Ritz. Anybody else?
Good evening. Thank you very much for the 9212 report. I recognize that a great deal of time and effort and expertise went into making it. Actually, I remember Libby Seifel from Redevelopment Day. She's not, she remembers me, I guess, too. But I'm, you have my letter, and I'm hearing comments and questions and clarifications that you're really doing my work for me. I'm really just here to ask for, to please include the up to 206 multifamily units of residential development. That's the reason we're having a ballot measure. The gentleman representing the developer just used a phrase about singling out the residential piece. Well, that's why we're here. If there wasn't a residential piece, we wouldn't have spent the last hour or two talking about this. The only reason there's a vote is because there's a residential component. It needs to be clear to the voters that that's what the decision that they're making. Yes, they're not approving that project. They're authorizing you, as a city council, to approve a rezoning that includes 206 multifamily residential units. That's what's being voted on. That's the decision that the voters will be making, is whether to authorize you to do that. If it just says a residential component, that, you know, actually, I would push the envelope and, and say that you ought to include also the phrase "up to four stories in height", but I'm not gonna go there. The language is in the ballot title and summary prepared by the city attorney. It says 206 multifamily residential units. I don't see any reason why it can't be included in the ballot wording, so that people are really clear about the decision that they're making when they vote. They're not voting on a hotel, they're not voting on all the other pieces of a, of a project. They're only voting because there's a residential component of 206 units being proposed. Please include that in the ballot wording. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next?
Good evening, Mayor DeGruy and members of the council. My name is Chris Scannell, and I am the election law counsel for the proponent of the measure. My law firm...
I didn't hear that last bit.
Can you say that?
Excuse me, I'm the election law counsel for the proponent of the measure.
Okay.
The reason I'm here is because our firm does initiative law. We've done approximately 400 ballot measures over the years. And so I want to address this issue of the 206 units in the ballot label, and suggest to you that it's actually not appropriate to pick that and include it and ignore all of the other components. There's extensive case law that talks about what the ballot title is supposed to say. It's supposed to be impartial, and it's not supposed to pick and choose bits and pieces that may influence the voters one way or the other. And the simple fact is that contrary to the statements that have been made here tonight, this is not a vote on 206 residential units. It's a vote on 206 residential units, provided that 75% of the property is devoted to open space. Certain amount of hotel space capped at a certain level is included in the project. A certain amount of commercial space is included in the project. And if you ignore all of those restrictions and limit it, you're actually misleading the voters as to what they're voting on. You're giving them the impression that it is a blank check, here's 206 units, and that's it. And I would suggest that the appropriate thing to do is to stick with the current language, which is very neutral, and the city attorney has the opportunity to prepare, and in fact, the obligation, an impartial title and summary, impartial analysis of the measure, that can list out all of these details in full, you know, full detail, so that the voters can understand the residential piece of it, the hotel piece of it, the open space piece of it. The developer in this case can't just walk in and say, "Give me 206 units," and ignore the requirement that there be open space. There are a lot of restrictions that are actually placed on the development and the requirements of this project, that if you simply focus on the 206 units are ignored, and will actively mislead the voters as to what this ballot measure is intended and required and designed to do. And so I would ask that you maintain the ballot language as it currently exists. Thank you.
Thank you. Brent Ritz? Does anybody else has a comment or a question? We can't answer questions, but we can listen to them.
Good evening, my name is Brent Ritz. A supporter in the public right to vote, and I think this is just the case in this, whether they decide the project's gonna go forward or not, I think they definitely should have the opportunity to have their say, and I think most of them have already had their opportunity to say. And I see everybody holding their head, so maybe this will help, I don't know. But I'll give you a few questions here, and some, my analysis of the report that was given, there's actually some flaws in it. And one thing that's in favor of the project is that it's a new project. Therefore, the yields on the tax base will yield much more on this project relative to a property that is perhaps under Proposition 13, that was built 30 years ago. So those monies that would be entering into the community would actually have positive benefit. That being said, I have yet to see a project that has affordable housing mixed in with a high-end hotel. Find me one, let me look at it, show me some analysis and some history, I'll give you an opinion on it. The other thing, too, is the hotel rates were quoted at maximum. Well, we just went through an eight-year expansion cycle, okay? I'll tell you the last couple of weeks, and I know most of the high-end hotels here, because I know the owners directly, they've been running 30%, 40% occupancy. Now, given this week, the fact that we're going through a vacation, some of those hotels are now at 100% occupancy, okay? There's a lot of skewedness in those numbers, okay? Let's get to the traffic thing, because that seems to be a sore issue, particularly with the widening, or possibly not widening, of the highway. Hotels don't work in this nice linear fashion. It's gonna look like a zoo someday, other days they're gonna look absolutely wonderful. And there will be traffic flow, which will just flow in and out, and there will be no issues at all. But, you know, I think there will be some positive benefits to Pacifica for some sort of project. What that looks like, I have no idea. I thought it raised these questions and gave you even more of a headache than you already have. But, that being said, I think it should go to the voters, and I think they already have quite a few opinions on the matter, so we'll see what happens. Thank you.
Thank you. So I don't have any other yellow cards? Anybody wanna come up? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council. Close the public hearing, bring it back to council. Mayor Protem O'Neill?
I just kinda wanted to ask clarification, is the below-market rate, the affordable housing units, are houses that are, are units that are for sale, correct? They're sale units?
No, they're all for rent.
Okay, well, our ordinance says, so they're gonna keep it, the ordinance says here about that they're below-market rate. I didn't see anything, do we have an ordinance for apartment below-market rate?
So, are you talking about the inclusionary housing ordinance?
No, in the staff report, there's a section here, cities below-market rate ordinance.
Oh, I think they're talking about the definitions of...
Just the definitions, okay. Now, what are the deed restrictions on these, that they will remain affordable? Can we put deed restrictions on a rental affordable housing unit?
Yes.
Yes.
We, oh, okay, stereo. Okay, one. Two, is there any, what would happen if it was to try to be converted to condos? Or town, just the, not the regular market rate ones? Could they be converted to condos? Because I don't know if we have a conversion ordinance, do we?
We do have a condo conversion ordinance. And there, there is a way to make for-sale housing affordable, restricted affordable as well.
But I'm talking about the market rate, because the people right now are voting on an initiative for 206 multifamily, which kinda shows apartments.
Correct.
But if it goes to, at some point, they wanna convert to condos...
Yeah. I, I understand the question. That wasn't one of the questions that I think that we answered, but if I had to answer that, I would say that that would not be consistent with the initiative, and that they would need a new vote of the people in order to convert to condos.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman Irvin?
Okay. I am struggling with the ballot language, and, and I'm gonna tell you why. And, and I understand the point from the ballot attorney. I really, I don't want to do something that biases anything, but, but it does seem critical that we are, we put it in there in 1983 to vote on because we wanted commercial, and we needed commercial in this community. And if we were gonna use it for something else, like residential, we would then have to put it to the vote of the people. And I see that they're authorizing residential, but they're authorizing residential only to a point. And that point, in this case, is 206 multifamily units. And everybody keeps talking about authorizing 206. It's not, we're not authorizing 206, we're authorizing up to 206. And that 206 is then the ceiling, at which it would have to go to another vote to go above, correct?
Correct.
I mean, that's what you said in, in the answers. So, but I get the issue about all the other specifics in there, and I'm wondering if there's a way that meets everybody's sort of issues about this, to say up to 206 multifamily units only under specific conditions identified in the initiative.
And that language is in there?
Mm-hmm.
Already there. All we would need to add is...
Well, you have "under certain conditions," and I would just add "only" to it.
Oh, "only under certain conditions." We could do that.
Identified in the initiative. But I wanna make sure that people know those other conditions, because that's a valid point that they're making. But, but the other valid point to me is that that's the ceiling. Does that make sense? And tell me what the issues are with that, if there are any.
Well, I, I explained my reasoning...
Yeah.
For why I drafted it the manner that I did, and, and for a lot of the reasons that Mr. Scannell spoke about. However, I also stated that I, I understand the concern that the council has with focusing on the fact that this deals with eliminating a vote requirement for residential development.
Up to 206.
Correct. So, I, I believe that if the council wanted to amend the language to say, to authorize up to 206 multifamily units of residential development at the Rockaway Quarry only under certain conditions specified in the initiative measure, that that would still meet the requirements of the election law. So, you know, I, I...
I guess...
I'm not concerned with those specific amendments. I've heard other proposed amendments, and I've told you that I'm not comfortable with those. But with that particular amendment, I, I am not concerned with the legality of those.
I'm truly trying to thread that needle of being fair on all sides, but the whole reason we have to do this is because of the residential units. That's the whole reason to do this, and if we aren't clear about what we're authorized, and that would be my argument, is that if we're not clear about what we're authorizing up to by voting yes on this, then I feel we're also equally deceptive to the, the public. It does have a package, it has all these other things, I mean, the footprint and all of those things have to go along with it. And that's why only under those specific conditions that are in the initiative, so hint, hint, read the initiative.
Which, which...
At least!
Which will be part of the ballot materials...
Right.
And it normally isn't. So, you know, the council's also taking the, the extra step to actually include the language of the initiative, so that voters can and should read the initiative.
Yeah. I, I get both issues here, but we aren't authorizing past that point by this yes. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Then I can live with that.
Councilwoman Irvin?
Yeah, I, I agree completely. Great points, I think, were made there, and it, it is, we wanna be impartial and, you know, provide a non-biased ballot language. And I just was getting your thoughts on what you thought about the clause, provided that 75% go to open space. Do you think that leaves out too many other items?
Well, let me tell you why I am comfortable with the up to 206 multifamily units, because we in fact are talking about residential development.
That's right.
So that is actually just further clarifying residential development. And then we would go on to say, "Only under certain conditions."
Right, not...
Now, we're talk, if, if you just wanna talk about open space, there are other conditions that we're not talking about.
Okay.
So, so I, I'm not sure, unless we had enough words left to include all of the conditions...
Yeah.
I wouldn't wanna do include just one.
Mayor Protem O'Neill?
I kinda wanted to get back to the affordable housing part of it. Okay, so we, we have a BMR ordinance, below-market rate, and that is the one at least that was presented here, is for owner-occupied, or for-sale BMRs, and the deed restrictions, et cetera. How will we manage that the people in the 20, 20% of the units that are BMR really are below the BMR? Because our ordinance also states there's a maximum income, but somebody moves out, how are we going to manage that the person moving in meets the requirements?
There are methods that jurisdictions can use to assure that. It, it does take more administrative work on the part of staff, but we would most likely impose conditions that would, to do the best of our ability, to assure that those units remain below-market. One way is to have the applicant actually designate which units will be below-market. The staff would then require that if a tenant were to move or relocate, that any new tenant would have to submit documentation to assure that they are below-market. Another, another tool is staff could conduct, and this would be a condition, unannounced site visits, to assure that the units that are designated below-market are in fact still occupied by the tenants that have been deemed to be, to fit within the qualifications for below-market rents.
So, then, the, would, the property manager fixing a leaky faucet, hot water heater and stuff, would be the responsibility of the owner? But then, if there's a tenant vacancy, do they submit their application to rent it to the city or to the owner?
No, no. The way the program typically works is that the owner, property manager, is responsible for complying with the below-market rate requirement, and then they submit reporting to the city. And either we, either in-house, or there are consultants that we can use to assist us in reviewing those reports. And you typically do an audit every so often to verify that the tenants that they have there are indeed meeting the, meeting the requirements. So it doesn't, it is a little bit more administration, but we're not going to become the property managers.
Well, I didn't think we'd be the property managers, now.
Or the leasing agents.
Okay, now, what about Section 8, which would bring in a... Okay, now, what about Section 8, which would bring in a tenant that is lower income, but then the landlord gets full freight?
I believe the way Section 8 works is that it's a voucher and they may go into any unit. Yeah.
They would not count towards the affordability. They would just be there.
We would, my guess is we would designate in the conditions of approval, units that will be below market rate so that we would know that this particular unit is always going to be below market rate.
Okay, so like Unit 54 is always below market rate.
That's the easiest way to...
Right, and a Section 8 tenant would not count towards that if they took another unit.
Okay. Because I know there's like 400 vouchers a month that aren't being used for Section 8. And there's like 300 or 400 just for veterans, too, in addition. But now, the, I forgot, I've drawn a blank on the question. Oh, well. Okay, so I...
I protect it.
Right. Okay, that was it. The condition for the 20% BMR, now that goes on in perpetuity, and if they sell the apartment house, that would go to the new owner, correct?
Right, correct. It would be a deed restriction.
There will be a deed restriction on that. Okay.
That's what we would condition.
Okay. And then what about, can you do a deed restriction in terms of conversion to market-rate condos?
Well, I believe...
Convert from apartment to a condo.
That would be...
That would require another vote of the people, so they would not have the authority to do that unilaterally.
Pardon?
They, I'm sorry. They would not have the authority to do that because I believe that would run counter to the initiative.
The actual conversion would require a count, a vote of the people.
Vote of the people, correct.
Okay. So, they would, you know, need you for a deed restriction. Could you, would you...
Correct.
Would you think you'd have to, well, they'd have to go through planning to do the conversion and that's how you would know.
Yes.
Okay. For plot maps and everything. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Keener.
Yeah. So, to sort of repeat my earlier point about the language, the specific language for residential development versus all of the other conditions or features that are required by the initiative. And that is, the residential requirement needs a vote of the people. All of the other requirements do not need a vote of the people in order to go through the normal permitting process. And so, that's the distinction. And that's why, you know, I favor the language that Councilwoman Nyhart favors as well, or I think she does, that says to authorize up to 206 multifamily units of residential development at the Rockaway Quarry and adding the word "only" under certain conditions specified.
So, are you ready for a motion, somebody?
Yeah, I would make that motion.
Okay.
Exactly. And I will, I know you're going to make me read something.
No, well, I don't need you to read the whole title.
Let Michelle read it.
We do need you to adopt the resolution.
Okay.
With the ballot question language amended. And do you want me to read it or?
Go ahead and adopt the resolution, but I've got it written down also.
Okay, so if you wanted to read the amendment.
Shall the initiative which amends Ordinance Number 391-CS to authorize up to 206 multifamily units, multifamily residential units, you should put the units after.
No, multifamily units of...
Residential development.
Development.
At the Rockaway Quarry only under certain conditions specified in the initiative measure entitled Pacifica Initiative Amending Ordinance. Do I have to read the rest of this? Thank you.
I've got the amendments.
Okay. But does that make that clear? So, you got...
Yes.
Okay.
So, we need a second.
Mayor Protem O'Neill.
I'll second it, but I just have a question. You're okay with that amendment from a legal point of view?
Yes.
Mayor Diggory, point of personal order. I wonder if we might reopen the public hearing so that we can address this again. Because I really think that this is some cause...
Protocol, we don't, we've already closed the public hearing and actually you're really out of order yourself, so I'm okay on legal grounds. Michelle, where are we?
Yeah, you're closed. The discretion is yours.
Sorry about that. So, we have a motion and a second.
I just wanted to say one more time that the only reason we're here, the only reason is about the residential. Otherwise, it would go through the normal process, et cetera. And that that is the up-to piece that we're not approving above that. So, people can't get additional money. And I, we can't go back and forth, but I just felt compelled to explain that.
Right, so I think we already did. So, I believe we have a motion and a second. Can we call for the vote, please? And that does pass, five to zero. Thank you all. Thank you, everybody, for their hard work. So, there's a lot more between now and November. So, where are we? Where's my agenda? I've lost the agenda.
Can you continue?
Yeah, please, sorry. We are now under, we have two more considerations. Consideration item number 11, which will be Police Department Report on Illegal Fireworks, and consideration item number 12, which will be Voting Delegate for the League of Cities. And I would like to take a short break, if you don't mind. Please, thank you.
So, this report will be a brief, hopefully, report on the illegal firework activity that we've seen lately in the City of Pacifica. Safe and sane fireworks have been sold between June 28th, July, actually 5th, per the municipal code, since, you know, as long as I've been here, at least 23 years. And since the early to mid 1990s, people from all over the place, all over the Bay Area, as far away as Stockton, San Wiquin County, have been flocking to the City of Pacifica to use safe and sane fireworks and also illegal fireworks. In the early to mid 90s, we had a huge population of usage of illegal fireworks and, as well as the same and sane on Pacifica's beaches. So, at that time, we brought in our command post. We had extra staffing on the beach. And we patrolled the beach and we even got the use of ATV to patrol up and down the beach in order to ensure a safe and sane usage of our fireworks. Over time, use of illegal fireworks lessened on the beaches, however, it seemed to grow within the other parts of the city, in the neighborhoods. In particular, it seems that use of illegal fireworks has grown on the south end of town. And we still get people that come to our city. In fact, this last year, Roberts Road was parked bumper to bumper, people coming here to watch the fireworks show, primarily the illegal fireworks. In June 2008, the City Council adopted an administrative civil fine schedule for municipal code violations. It enabled our officers to administratively cite violators who possessed 25 or less pounds of illegal fireworks. Instead of giving them a citation, a criminal citation, to appear in court for a misdemeanor, we were now able to give them a administrative citation, which carried a fine of $1,000 for possession of illegal fireworks, 25 pounds or less. It really helped streamline the process. Rather than people having to go to criminal court with a court date, the district attorney's office potentially pleading those citations down to an infraction, whereas the violators pay the fine anyway, we were able to do it within the city. If there was a hearing, which it is an appealable offense, the appeal was held by city officials in the City of Pacifica. That proved to be fairly effective. However, word spread about our use of the "ouch" citations, as they were called. And then the illegal fireworks moved from the streets and into backyards of houses. And enforcement became much more difficult. You know, Neighborhood Watch is a great thing, but it became used against our enforcement. Our officers would be driving down the street and you'd hear people yell, "Cops, cops, the cops are here." And in fact, this last year, when I was driving around in an unmarked vehicle, bless you, I personally saw a person on a walkie-talkie, you know, giving commands when it was okay after a marked police vehicle had gone by. So, our enforcement efforts have really, really been hampered by bringing the illegal fireworks use into backyards where we can't see people actually using them. In order to conduct the enforcement efforts, whether it's the criminal citation or the administrative citation, we have to see the person possess the firework or ignite the illegal firework for us to take any action. So, our efforts have been hampered. So, in June 2013, City Council adopted an urgency ordinance regulating fireworks use on the beaches. It made the beaches even more safe and sane. The only beaches or beach where fireworks are allowed, the safe and sane variety, is on Lindemar Beach between Taco Bell and the restrooms and the pump station. We do allow areas in the paved parking lots just south of the Taco Bell and the south Rockaway Beach parking area. And due to the effort from former Chief Jim Tassa and the Fireworks Task Force, we made great efforts in limiting the environmental impact of fireworks usage. So, not only were fireworks areas on the beach limited, there were organized cleanup efforts that were mandated by those who sold. And also, we started an anti-litter campaign throughout the city. Here's some of the stats for fireworks calls from the last several years. And you can see, one column indicates the year, the other column, July 4th, whether it's from 00:01 a.m. till midnight. And then we've distinguished from 5:00 p.m. to midnight. And the total calls for service are on the right-hand side. The total calls may be an intoxicated person, some other type of, some other type of call for service. But you see just the fireworks-related calls indicated as well. So, we are looking at exploring other possible solutions for enforcement action. One potential solution that we'd like to examine again is a social host type ordinance. We would like to have the opportunity to work with the city attorney's office in adjusting our current fireworks ordinances. As I said, right now, we have to see fireworks in hand in order to take enforcement effort. We would like the ability to hold a property owner, a responsible person on scene at that house, responsible for illegal activities, the same type of action that we take for underage The way we would do this is we would like to use greater, make greater use of undercover officers, unmarked, plainclothes officers to locate the houses where fireworks are being used. You know, right now, we know where they're being used. We just can't, you know, can't make the arrests because we don't see it happening. But once officers are able to maintain surveillance, watch a house for a little bit, they're able to positively identify where the houses, or the houses in which the fireworks are coming from, cite the property owner, cite the responsible person on scene for that illegal activity. Another component to this action that we'd like to take is stepped-up community engagement. Make greater use of social media. We have Facebook, Twitter, Nextdoor, our city websites. Make greater use of that. Have community meetings and promote other means of reporting. You know, right now, we have the silent witness tip line. We have crime tips online. We have 911. We have our business line. But we really need to reach out to the community and try to fight the stigma right now of people being snitches. You know, there are a lot of people, they know that their neighbor's doing it, but they really don't want to call and tattle on them. But we need to, we need to encourage people to call to help make a safer community. Speaking of which, we did have, you know, we did have a Grass Hillside fire this last year because of fireworks. So, again, with the community engagement, we would like to continue to circulate materials, whether it's anti-litter campaign, the "ouch $1,000 administrative fee" material, and also promote more block parties. We have a lot of block parties here in the City of Pacifica. Some are officially sanctioned, some are not. But reach out to the people who want to actually organize the block parties, make sure they understand what is safe and sane, what is allowed, what's not allowed. And just make sure we have that open dialogue with the community. Some of the fiscal impact of our enforcement efforts, it just goes back to 2014. We spent around $32,680 in 2014. Last year was roughly $33,141. We still need to determine the final numbers for this last year. So, that is actually the last slide I have here of the presentation. Just in conclusion, I want to paint a picture of the use of illegal fireworks here in the City of Pacifica, how it's changed from the beaches into the neighborhoods, from the streets into backyards. And hopefully, we'd have the opportunity to work with the city attorney's office and work on an ordinance that would make us more effective in keeping the city safe. So, thank you, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. Council, I think it was, the first one was Councilwoman Nyhart.
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. Thank you. I was part of helping develop the, well, promoting the social horse ordinance. It really came out of Mary Baron and the youth themselves, but I appreciated that so much and it made such a big difference. I'm really interested in this concept here, but I want to ask a couple of questions. And I know we have to get into doing the ordinance and we have some examples floating around and stuff, but does it have to be just the officer or could people potentially upload videos with identifying information and things? Would that help? Because everybody's got a cell phone.
Right. Yeah, there's, everybody has a cell phone. I understand there's also an app available that people could use, but right now, as far as I understand it, it is up to an officer to be able to, or city, designated city employee to be able to issue that administrative citation. I know one city has, has language in their municipal code about deputizing certain city employees to do that function, but to my knowledge, right now, it's only a city employee or a law enforcement.
I'm sure they could only be the ones to issue the citation, but I'm wondering if the video evidence and things like that might help. I mean...
Well, I, that's available now to the police to use that. Ultimately, it's within their discretion. Certainly, they can use that. I think the question is how soon can they upload it and/or view it and then, and then get to the location where...
Right, sure.
The house is. One thing I will say about, that I would like the council to talk about, because it's going to be an issue for drafting of an ordinance, and that is, we would certainly recommend that there be strict liability for the property owner. And is it going to be strict liability for owners who are absent or only owners who are present at the time that the fire, illegal fireworks are taking place? So, you know, that's something that I would like the council to have some, a little bit of a discussion on in terms of how do you, who do you want to be subject to?
So, just by clarification, I'm absent and I have a big backyard. And the kids pop over the fence and use my yard to shoot off fireworks. Is that what you're talking about versus I give somebody permission to use my house for a party?
Those are all issues that you need to, all of those can be addressed in the ordinance. And so, I think we need some direction about who do you want to hold responsible for this? That's all. Just who should be held responsible for illegal fireworks?
I got it. The reason... I got it. The reason I ask about the video is we actually, I shouldn't say all that. But, but people are taking videos of folks that are shooting off fireworks at the time. And, and the officers were saying to us that they couldn't use it. Is that correct, Michelle? They couldn't use it in our current ordinance? Because they have to physically see it.
Correct.
Could that potentially change?
Well, I, I, I think that you do need an officer, a citing officer to prove in some manner that the illegal fireworks were conducted at the site. I, I do have concerns with receiving a video the day after and then having an officer cite somebody for that.
Oh, I, I totally get that, but like you said, there are apps and people have them at the scene, for example. Just, just saying. It's something to sort of think about. And the other thing I wanted to ask about, is it possible to increase the fine? And still be administrative?
We can look into that as well and bring that back to you.
That, that would all be brought back to you when we bring back a draft of an ordinance.
Great suggestions. I really, yeah.
Councilwoman Irvin?
I'm just wondering if, and I apologize if I missed it, but how many citations did you actually issue this past 4th of July?
I did not state, but I can. This last 4th of July, seven administrative sites.
Okay, and that was out of 176, well, that's not, maybe 103 calls?
The total amount of fireworks-related calls on the 4th of July was 113.
Right.
And just to paint a picture, the previous year, we had nine administrative citations. Year before that, 14. Year before that, 17.
Interesting.
So people are getting, they're getting wiser unfortunately, in that aspect.
And we're tying your hands largely because it's so difficult to.
It, it is. I mean, people are using different, different techniques. You know, they're watching out for us and notifying each other. It's, it seems like almost a cultural issue of sorts. As far as the video, you know, that was addressed. I mean, yes, that would be useful, but again, it's a matter of the timeliness of its submission. We can always collect it and use it for evidence. Whether there's administrative citations issued for fireworks, conceivably it could be used for maybe nuisance abatement of some sorts, using other municipal codes perhaps. But that's a, that's a much longer-term project. Much more time's involved in that.
And, and in terms of the liability issue, I know you were talking about who exactly to give the ticket to. And there's, so there's long-term rental owners. There's also people that have Airbnb's, things like that. So are there legal issues with ticketing, for instance, somebody who's renting a place for a weekend or something? Or would that go, we, we could do whatever we choose, basically?
Correct. Correct.
Okay.
And that, and that is really a policy question.
Okay, great.
I'm just going down the line because I don't remember. Mayor Protem?
Okay. Okay, so basically, under the social ordinance, we would be changing the policy from the officers actually having to see the firework being lit to that they see it's at 123 Palmetto and they can go to the house and cite the owner. Is that correct? The big difference?
Essentially, yes. Instead of identifying an individual using an illegal firework, we would be identifying the property from which it came.
Okay. And if they were just putting it on a public street, you'd then have to, you know, do that. Now, the safe and sane would still be allowed, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Can you do a higher fine for the second and third offense?
Yes.
And can you carry that over? So 2016, you issue a fine for $1,000. 2017, it goes up to $2,000 because you had one in 2016. Is there like a limit as to how far back you can go?
Well, not if you are, not if you're citing an individual. If, with regard to the property, we are still citing an individual. It's just the owner of the property. So, and, and I'm not aware of any time limits on how far back you can go. It's, it really is usually drafted, first occurrence, this set fine. Second occurrence, double. Third occurrence, triple.
Right, but that can go year to year since this is an annual event?
Yes.
That's another way to go. Good.
Oh, yes, okay. And you mentioned the expenses for the extra personnel. On, do we have any, if I remember correctly, we about broke even from the 8% surcharge, if I remember correctly from last year's report? I realize you don't have this year's report. So, you're shaking?
Yes, that, that is consistent with my memory as well.
Yeah, so it's like within a couple of grand or $500 or something. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Keener?
Okay. So one thing I've noticed about the, the current ordinance is it's up to, it's possession of up to 25 pounds of illegal fireworks. What's, what happens if you get somebody that's got more than 25 pounds? And I'm sure that, that people do.
Correct. Depending on what the nature of the fireworks are, a lot of these fireworks, the larger M80s, 1000s, 100s, large mortar rounds that go up in the sky and make the brilliant displays, they actually qualify as felonies in the criminal law. And, you know, we might choose to pursue a felony arrest versus the $1,000 administrative citation based on the circumstances and what we find in someone's possession.
And that would be state code?
Yes, that's the California Penal Code or Health and Safety Code, I'm sorry. And yes, that we would, we would book them into county jail. And fireworks of that size are actually turned over immediately to the bomb department, bomb disposal unit of the county.
Okay. When, when, talking about the current situation now, when you cite somebody, do you search their house to find, to look for more illegal fireworks?
No. The, the main reason we, we would be able to search a house is with, you know, their consent, permission. If there's some sort of exigency that allows us to search because of there's some dangerous circumstance. However, in general, if we need, if we want to search a house, we'd have to get a search warrant.
So the, the citation that you hand out isn't enough to allow you to search?
No, sir.
Okay. And you say that, this is, this has been a point of confusion for me. I've seen on the blogs that, that people say that police officers have told them that they have to actually see a person lighting the firework. And that, that just didn't make any sense to me because it's a possession offense, right? So, but you have to at least see them possess the firework? What, what does, what does that actually mean? Does it mean holding it in their hand or having it nearby?
It, it should be more than just nearby. You know, for, for example, you know, somebody could walk up and look at it. That's not possession. I wouldn't say it's constructive possession. If they reach down, pick it up, bingo. It's in, it's on their clothing, on their person, in a pocket, something like that. That, that would be possession.
Okay. Regarding the social horse, hope, social host ordinance, so I, I would say also to this that there are owners and then we have to consider tenants, right? As, as an equivalent class to owners, at least. Okay. And.
I made notes of the different groups that you all have talked about, and we'll come back to you with them each addressed.
Recommendations.
Yeah. One more thing is, oh, block parties. It's, it's been mentioned to me by several folks that block parties, in fact, are part of the problem. I don't know this myself, but several people have commented on that. Do you, do you have any information relating to that?
I don't have any specific information. I can understand how if you barricade one end of the block and the other, it may slow a law enforcement response into the area perhaps, therefore give people more time to hide illegal fireworks. But I don't have any data that would, you know, back that assumption up.
Okay. Okay, I think that's it for me. Thanks.
Mayor Protem?
By my recollection, this is the first year we actually had several fires, or maybe we had one last year. And not, I mean, 2014 or 2015. So is there any workable way that you can think of to actually have a higher fine if the fireworks causes an incident? Is there any way to figure that out, or is it kind of useless to put it in an ordinance?
If, if we have a firework that goes off, causes a fire, you know, first, you know, instead of handling it administratively and, and that fine, perhaps we would go with the standard arson, reckless burn, some sort of, you know, a criminal aspect of it instead. We would have to determine who had the firework, where it came from, you know, that sort of thing. And I don't know if people would readily admit, yes, my firecracker caused the hillside to burn down.
So it's probably not workable?
It might be. We'd have, we'd have to look at it, but there may be, you know, remedies in place with the penal code right now as far as arson and that, that sort of thing. It would, it would take an investigation to figure out what the origin, who, who the origin or originator was.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Nyhart?
Just a couple last. Just thinking about, I'm still stuck on those videos only because they're so easy and they're around all the time. And so when you consider this, if you could consider, maybe could you use them, like if they could be given to the officers at the time? You know, it's, there's a thousand ways to do that pretty easily. It seems like you should be able to use what, what's available, and I'd love to hear more about that.
Right.
And then the other comment, I was just gonna, gonna note, because I had my niece here, because she hadn't seen all of this, driving down Lindemar Boulevard at the height of it is a real experience that everybody should try sometime.
Should live there.
And I can, I can tell you that, that the, the bottle rocket that went across the front of the car had nothing to do with block parties, and I was pretty stunned. So there, there's just gotta be a way for us to bring this down without, you know, I mean, I do know when you go to the top of the hill also, you see them all over the peninsula. So I know that other communities struggle with this, but it just, it's, it's, we've got to figure out something that's real constructive. And it seems like this ordinance gives you at least more latitude.
I, I think it'd be a great help. It'd be a great start. It wouldn't solve the problem overnight. It'd probably take a few years. But I think eventually the culture would change. And once a few homeowners, responsible parties, whoever they may be, were cited, I think word would spread and the problem would decrease. And then you mentioned the use of video. I mean, it's out there. It is a great tool. I don't know how usable it is just yet.
Yeah.
You know, we need to generate records through our dispatch, so you've got the log of calls and the timeliness. You know, it's, it's something we have to work on. I think it's something we definitely have to look at. I mean, video is the wave of the future. It's in our cars. It'll be on our bodies shortly. But how exactly do we use it? So.
But just to try to stay ahead, I would add empty lots to that discussion. I don't know how you're, I guess, I don't know how you're responsible for it. That's an interesting thing to, yeah, okay.
Councilwoman Keener?
A few more questions that I forgot. So with the social horse, a social host ordinance, would, would you be able to search a property that you have determined has violations then? I mean, obviously, it would have to be written into the ordinance, right? But would that, would that be legal? So the thing I'm thinking about is several people have commented to me that there must be a few individuals around that just have garages full of this stuff. I mean, that, that are really endangering their neighbors. If, you know, they, it caught fire, you know, it would be just a tremendous explosion. And, and that, that's one thing that, that I would like to, to try and get at.
Yeah, in, in general, again, if, if I'm, let's say I'm invited into someone's living room, I'm giving them the administrative citation because a bottle rocket went off in their backyard. If I'm there, I have a lawful right to be there because I was invited in, and then I see something illegal, I, I can seize it at that point in time, but I can't continue on without further invitation, permission, the search warrant, some other exigency. I hear an explosion in the back of the house or scream for help. So, you know, just because I have the power to do a social host citation to the property owner doesn't, unfortunate, well, fortunately, I guess, does not give me carte blanche to search a house. There's still the, you know, the protections.
And to answer your question about whether or not we could draft provisions into a social horse ordinance, social, social.
Enough, can't you do that?
Say that three times.
Social host ordinance. Yes, we can, I, I believe we have a lot of latitude. What we can't do is we cannot give police officers the authority to search that doesn't already exist under their, under Fourth Amendment rights.
Of course.
You know, but, but in terms of creating a social host ordinance that will solve some of these issues for you, I believe we can do that.
Okay. And, you know, one thing that, that's probably available for past years, I don't know, is how much groups that are selling the Safe and Sane fireworks actually make? And how much is sold, you know, from each fireworks stand? And so, you know, I think that would be sort of a, those would be good figures to bring into the discussion also.
Get those.
Right.
How we get those?
Yeah, okay.
Yes, I, I have seen those for past years, but not, I don't remember what they were, but yes, we do have that information.
Yeah, okay.
And later on, Chief Stider will be giving a full 4th of July report, which will include that data as well.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Mayor Protem O'Neil?
If we do a social ordinance, would we have to define illegal? Or is illegal just anything going in the air or M80s or, you know?
It's my belief, it's, it's already defined in the municipal code as it exists. We would just be expanding the social host portion. And even it, the social host ordinance addressing underage drinking does define a responsible person. However, this would be a little bit different, so, you know, whereas in 2014, we may have been the first city to do it if we went forward. Now, other cities have, and we can research what language they've used. So it should be a little bit easier to come with, with something that's workable for us.
Councilmember Keener?
In fact, one of the emails we all got, I think, In fact, one of the emails we all got, I think, today, I got it anyway, was, yeah, the, an officer of TNT, Safe and Sane fireworks, had sample ordinances from six different cities, I think, so, and I'm sure that you knew about them, but, yeah.
Okay, thank you. So I don't know if anybody found out, because I thought I saw a sign in San Bruno that said their fine was $5,000. I don't know if anybody checked on that.
I don't, I'm not aware, I can't speak to that, I'm sorry.
So I would like to know neighboring fines, because if our fine is lower than somebody else's, they're still gonna come here, so I don't wanna, you know. But I think the cultural thing really bothers me, that there's a perception that there's a culture in Pacifica that where the community and the city is A-OK with this. I certainly want to do whatever we can to offset that. Is there any way of being able to find out the point of sale of illegal fireworks so that those people doing the selling, wherever they are, would also have to pay up?
I know, you know, San Francisco PD does operations in Chinatown where a lot of illegal fireworks do originate. It would take, it would take a lot of staff time to work with them and follow the trail if it led to Pacifica at all. Can be done, but it would be sort of labor intensive, I think.
My other question too was that anything we do is going to involve outreach and to the community at large to enable the community to participate. So we had the 8%, that's from the companies, I think there's two that sell fire, Safe and Sane fireworks. If I remember correctly, when we were first talking about this with them years ago, the cost of policing was part of that conversation, that they were to cover both outreach and education and also staff time. So have we actually revisited how much they participate? I think that might be a good way to also look at that.
Well, I think that 8% that was referenced earlier is designed to cover those costs, and we did look at that in 2014 and 2015, and they are covering it within, as Councilmember O'Neil said, within a couple of thousand dollars. If this does require bringing in officers from other agencies to assist with some of the work, that could increase the cost, so perhaps we'd like to revisit that. But currently, they're pretty much covering the cost for the most part.
Yeah, because actually, we are helping them with their business, and we're not in the business of business for other people. We're in the business of protecting our own people, so, did you have something you wanted to add to this?
Well, I was just gonna kind of answer your question.
Oh, is it answered?
Yeah, are you done? When I was on the fireworks task force, one of the things we negotiated with TNT and Phantom is they are, I think TNT, or one of them bought the ATV for the police department to use. They are also paying for extra dumpsters to recology, I think, at Lindemar Beach and at Rockaway, so they're paying for a couple extra dumpsters. They also did print up the posters, et cetera, and the signs that are at every single place where, booth where it's sold. So, I mean, I'm not saying they're paying enough, I'm just-
Signs saying, what are the signs saying?
It's illegal to do fireworks, you know, thousand dollar fine, you know, do it, don't be a litter bug, do it only at the beach type of thing, you know? And so, they're putting some money in now. I mean, I'm sure they make an awful lot of money. And there was, an interesting thing I thought about was that, I know like the little green balls that blow up are a real pain because those, the balls stay intact, that you can, if you give them a year's notice, you can eliminate the specific firework from the packets, you know, because the packets are made up, you know, over in China, and they, if you tell them no green balls, or cactus, I think it is, then they won't put cactus in that. So you can actually put that in your ordinance if you want.
Anybody else? So we'll take it to open the public. So have anybody else that wants to join us here? Peter Loeb, Diana Seeger, and Erin Macias, Toni Boykin, and Angela Falcone, and Melina Gold.
Peter Loeb, I stuck around for this item only because I have a bit of history with the subject. Fireworks in Pacifica are as kind of a third rail of politics, but I think this, the social host ordinance idea is something that everybody can probably get behind, maybe not the people who are shooting on illegal fireworks, but they're not about to come out here and argue against it, I don't think. So I think it's essentially a safe and sane proposal, pardon, and there should be a minimum of political fireworks, pardon the phrases.
You're good at this hour.
I am here to support the idea of a social host ordinance. I think it's a wonderful thing, and that we ought to try it. There are a lot of issues to work out, details about what would be in that ordinance, but I think it would be a wonderful thing to see what happens, and to think of it as an experiment. If it went well, and you got a lot of fine revenue, it could be a very good thing. But it's, well, I could go on. I support a social horse ordinance, please do that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Diana Seeger?
Can Diana and I switch spots? Is that okay? Is that all right?
Diana, what's your last name?
I'm Erin Macias, is it okay if I speak before Diana?
Oh, yeah, 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 sure.
Thank you. So I wanted to obviously speak to this issue because it's very important to me. Block parties are currently promoted as the solution to our beach fireworks issue back as resolved in 2013. They have been partially effective in deterring the out-of-towners from trashing our beaches and abating pollution issues that are stemming from the fourth. Effectively, as we now know, and it's quite obvious, the solution has shifted fireworks from the beach into the residential neighborhoods, and it is increasing the risk of fire and injury. The frequency and use of illegal fireworks in the residential neighborhoods is in plain sight in the middle of the street. It is fully documented on YouTube, it is fully documented on social media. In two days, except last night, we got a break, there will have been 30 consecutive nights of illegal fireworks in Lindemar. In an effort to support positive two-way dialogue, I would like all the stakeholders to be involved, and we respectfully request the reinstatement of the fireworks task force. We feel that this issue is multifaceted, it's not something that should occupy all of council's time, it's something that needs to be discussed extensively by all of the stakeholders involved. That includes the fundraising folks, that includes TNT, it includes the environmentalists, it includes council, it includes the police department, this is a very complicated issue. A task force can address the following issues. The adoption of a social host ordinance, which is an excellent idea. Here is a four-page social host ordinance from Kern County called You Light It, We Cite It. It has to do with disclosure, legal disclosure, we're talking about civil rights, we have constitutional rights that are protected, illegal search and seizure, there's a lot involved in this issue. Oh. Revision of the block party application, the requirement for the block party applicants to attend a safety meeting similar to the Fog Fest safety meeting, the adoption of a block party host ordinance to deter the complicity between the neighbors. We would like to research options for modifications to fines and the legality of such. The state has set limits, we cannot pass those. Provide PPD with the resources, the volunteers, to research federal state funds for increased police enforcement such as Department of Homeland Security funds. Support the PPD's best practices for social media. Support PPD in their enforcement efforts with training, adoption of new strategies such as the mobile data terminal that cannot be picked up by scanners, and the use of walkie-talkies. Support PPD in the use of undercover foot patrol like we do at Fog Fest. A task force promotes collaboration between the stakeholders. It reduces the valuable time at our council meetings. One more second. A task force can present organized summaries for the council to weigh in on future decisions. Please motion to reinstate the task force. Thank you.
Thank you. Diana?
Diana Seeger, Park Pacifica. I'm actually here just to support Erin and everything she's just stated, as well as Toni, who'll speak after me. I really think it's time for our community to come into the 21st century and do things differently, and that's, I'm just here to voice that that's my opinion too, that I really think we want to move it forward. That's it.
Thank you.
Toni Boykin?
In my comments, I'm going to address the problem as dangerous explosives issue rather than a fireworks issue.
Can you lower your mic, can you lower your microphone? You can just lower it a little.
Okay, I'm down. I'm going to address the problem as a dangerous fireworks issue rather than, I mean, dangerous explosives issue rather than a fireworks issue, because the term fireworks conjures up an image of beautiful displays and celebrations. So the problem I'm addressing is deadly explosives, which are also toxic, and its criminal activity and the quantity present could also be involved trafficking in our town. If we do not address it seriously, we could be vulnerable to lawsuits. If I were a buyer of property near one of those homes and it was not revealed to me, I would consider it non-disclosure. This is not only an enforcement issue, it is a community problem and a quality of life issue, and calling it a culture is incorrect. It's a criminal element. It's not, it is not our culture. And it's not a Fourth of July issue. You know, as Erin mentioned, every night since the Fourth of July, there's been something going on. And whenever there's a sports victory, New Year's, you know, and all kinds of other occasions, somebody's birthday probably. So I may, and my main concern is, as John mentioned, that there's dangerous explosives with the power of a quarter to half a stick of dynamite are stored in large quantities in our neighborhoods. And it's obvious from the evasive tactics, including the use of walkie-talkies to relay law enforcement presence, that the violators are well aware this is illegal activity. They admit it, flaunt the activity on social media, and even taunt anyone who objects in any way. There have been cases of retaliation after enforcement against people who were in the vicinity but not responsible for reporting the activity. This deters people from reporting, even if their anonymity is protected. A social horse ordinance is desirable, and exploring the option to extend that to block parties could be effective. That is, the person who applies for the block party permit would assume responsibility. In addition, the fines are not high enough to be a deterrent, especially when the gatherings are large and the fines are divided among the participants. At the last meeting, we were encouraged by what we considered a positive step in the direction of reinstating a task force to address the dangerous explosive issues. Yet tonight's agenda includes only one option and dismisses the notion of a task force on the basis that an explosives task force, it's like social horse ordinance, I guess, will be unfamiliar with best practice, police enforcement strategies, and associated legal implications. I would hope that any task force on the problem of explosives would include police participation, or if that is not possible, at least the benefit of their advice. We deserve the right to quiet enjoyment of our city, protection of our environment from toxic materials, as well as the protection from potential catastrophic consequences stemming from the movement and storage of dangerous explosives.
Okay, that's good. Thank you. Angela Falcone and Melina Gold? Do we have to start talking about lateness?
Hi, thank you for your time. My name is Angela Falcone. I respectfully request the formation of a task force to explore the dangers and implications of illegal and explosive fireworks. I also wanted to thank you, Mayor DeGree, for pointing out that your job is to protect us and not in the business of promoting other businesses. That was personally gratifying to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you. Melina Gold, anybody else want to say anything? Please bring up a card.
Melina Gold, first of all, I want to thank you for bringing this on the agenda. I want to thank the police department for addressing this issue as well. That kind of reaffirms to me and to all that it's a very serious issue. I'm glad it's being addressed. I am a local realtor as well, and I talk to many clients every day, on daily basis. This issue is brought up probably three out of five times by our local residents. Today I spoke to a family who really brought up the issue, and kind of surprised me a little bit, but they brought it as a, they considered this, they actually said it was, it's a society cancer in our community, and it's growing every year, and it's becoming more and more painful. So I kind of promised to some of our clients that I will speak up and bring up the issue, so we request that you really take very serious consideration this year. I know it's been brought up previous years as well, it was not really addressed the way it was. We really hope and appreciate if we really take serious actions this time, this year. Thank you.
Thank you. No other yellow cards, so we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council, and I have Councilwoman Nyhert?
Yeah, I just wanted to underscore what we had talked about at the last meeting, and, you know, I've read right over that line. Thank you, Toni Boykin, for pointing it out. I read right over that piece about a task force and unfamiliar, I think that when you listen to Erin Macias talk about all the details, that you get a lot of knowledge out there in terms of what's going on, and the task force was really effective in bringing disparate groups together with the problem last time. I know it's, I know it's more work with our staff, but I do think that's not a bad idea in terms of one component. But I also want to say, I want to go ahead with the social horse ordinance and look at the fines and the whole bit before we get too far down the road in conjunction with it. So I wouldn't mind doing the two paths simultaneously, if that's anybody's preference, just the thought. Were you gonna say something, Michelle?
Yes, if I could just add something here. So forming a task force is not on the agenda tonight, so I think in terms of action that the council can take tonight, you can give direction to staff on the social host ordinance, and then ask staff to bring back another agenda item for you to consider a task force.
Well, you're gonna have to bring back a social host ordinance, and you're gonna have to bring back, there was also the whole group of things, including community engagement. I'm recommending that we bring back also a task force, it'd be the same kind of thing.
At the same time, which won't be at the next meeting or even two meetings?
Right, right.
Councilmember Urban?
Wanted to thank everybody who came to speak about this. It is a really difficult issue that we've been dealing with for many, many, many years, and I really did appreciate that comment regarding a block party ordinance. I think that's a good idea, because one of my concerns, just hearing about a social host ordinance, is that going to drive people out of their house? Are they actually going to be safer to do it in the middle of the block versus a house? So that was one of my concerns. So if somehow you can explore an element about a block party ordinance, or, you know, how-
To, to, so a social host ordinance for block parties?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or as another condition within?
Just, is there anything we can do? I mean, just advice or anything?
I don't know, but we could look into that.
Sure.
Well, one of the issues is going to be, who is going to be cited and for what?
So who sponsors a block party is-
Right, so I remember that we had this to-
stuck on are who is responsible.
Right.
Same question we were talking about with regard to this social horse ordinance. I think, I think those same questions would have to be answered for the block party. So, we can, we can look into that.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm not as certain that the answers for a block party ordinance are going to be as easy, or as, as easily identified as we can with just the social horse, host ordinance, but we will look into it.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that, and it's just the same as you have multiple people on a lease who gets ticketed. I mean, there's a lot of tricky things to-
A building.
Yeah. Figure out, but, appreciate it.
Disappeared. I found it. It disappeared.
Okay, Mayor Protem?
I kind of, I wanted to actually, I actually asked staff at the last meeting to come back with a report that discussed the fireworks task force and meeting, and the virtues of what a sta, what a council meeting is, a study session and a task force, so that we could go over and the public could kind of say. So, I did ask for that to come back as an agenda item. It's in the minutes, which just went black on my laptop. This is, oh, go ahead.
I remember that comment. I wasn't clear on, I thought this is why, this addressed what the request was, so I apologize if I missed the translation.
Okay, but I would like to say that I would be supportive of a task force also, and that I would be, I chaired the last one, I would be happy to chair this one also.
Okay. Where was I? Oh, Councilman Keener?
Yeah, so I would be supportive of a task force also, and I would, I also would be supportive of efforts to come up with a social host ordinance. And I don't know if you would weave that in with, with the task force or not, but if you don't, I would say solicit public input as, for instance, you know, from concerned residents like who have shown up here tonight and sat here through thick and thin to finally get their, their three minutes. So, and I know that Chief Stidle is sort of developing a tradition, or I hope he's developing a tradition of doing that, of, of reaching out to the public, you know, to certain members of the public that, that identify themselves as particularly interested in one ordinance or another, so.
He has been checking in with stakeholders, yes, as a way of-
There you go. Yeah, right.
Yeah, I forgot to mention, I have, I would like to explore a social ordinance also.
Right, I would be ditto for that, and also stakeholders. I think stakeholders, obviously, one of the big ones would be those who, who, the nonprofits that do sell the fireworks. I think we should consider, when we come back, also a letter to those nonprofit organizations indicating that if we don't have residents and visitors containing themselves by, by using illegal fireworks, that we may have to look at, revisit our safe and sane fireworks I don't, and maybe, it's been a while, I think at one time we thought of a citywide presentation of fireworks for the community. I don't remember where that went, but it might be another good time to consider that as well. Where would you do it and all? But I, I think this culture of, this notion that the culture is, it's an A-OK thing in Pacifica, we definitely have to make sure that that is a totally misunderstood, misrepresented such thing as a culture in this community, no way, and that our public safety and sanity is, and community efforts are much more, are, are our focus and our mission. What was I, I have too many notes. And I think also looking at the fact of storage and the amount of money we can charge for different, that there may be different categories of fines, as, as storage being one of them, and the more dangerous type of fireworks is another. I don't know how you, how you would do that, but I, if we could put that in, in the mix somewhere to, in our next conversations, is that possible?
Explore what the options are for fines. Yeah.
Okay. I think that was it for me. So, Councilmember Nyheart?
I, I just wanted to say that a good place to start, we had a very balanced task force, if I remember last time, of all the stakeholders, and I, I certainly agree that we have folks that are very interested here and with considerable knowledge, but also to have that balance was, was really effective, because they came up with a lot of really good resolutions to pretty basic problems. So, I concur with that. So, I'd like to see us, do you need a formal action here? Because I'd like to just, have you gotten enough direction?
I definitely have. I, I'm clear on what the council's asking for.
I have one thing to add to storage. Interestingly enough, one of the things that I think has probably happened, and I'm, I know it's not just legend, is people running around with trunks, car trunks, with, I'm, I'm really very sure that that has happened, and that's not even on a property, so throw that into the mix, because that creates a whole nother nightmare for people.
Regarding apps, you know, the airport, airplane noise situations, there's been a, a couple of very clever people creating apps. You just put it, and that gives you all the metrics of horizontal and vert-
GPS.
Yes, can pinpoint where it is. Okay, Mayor Protem O'Neil?
I just wanted to kind of address your comment in regards to looking at whether or not we want to continue permitting safe and sane. That's something I would, if we were to go that route, the voters in Pacifica have twice voted to have fireworks, so if we wanted to go down that road, I really do think that's more of a ballot, I know, let the people vote. We've heard that. But I really do think, being they voted twice, that that would be something that would have to go on the ballot, if we were to outlaw the fireworks.
But I think, though, what I was getting at more so was that those folks who, who find the sale of safe fireworks so essential, that, that they need to understand that it isn't just the sale of safe and sound, that that's very valuable and so forth, but they need to also help us out with their thought and input, and I'm certainly not against the vote thing and the vote-
Oh, yeah, no, they have, yeah, they were there at the table last year, and, yeah, no, they were there, even TNT, Phantom, the environmental police were there, yeah, there was quite a few there.
Okay, so are we good? You have everything to do? Okay, so, we have one more considerate, thank you again, everybody. You have one more consideration, and I think it's the who can vote.
Who is going to?
At the October, I think the league meeting is October 5th, 6th, and 7th, with the voting actually taking place on the 7th in San Diego.
On Friday, the 7th, that's when the business meeting takes place.
Where's it at? Oh, Long Beach.
Long Beach.
So, the league is asking for a design, to, for a council to designate a voting delegate
and one or two alternat, alternates.
Sue, are you going?
Well, it's, it's a little early just yet. I, I don't know how October's going, and I also would like to know what things we're voting on. I think that will make a big, my son may be graduating from NOAA in October sometime, so I, I'm kind of, I don't know when that's going to be, but, so that's the one reason.
Mike want to say something?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember O'Neil? I mean, Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I was waiting to see what the agenda for the conference was, but I was thinking of going, so, yeah.
So, we, we need to, we need to create a document of some kind, and also if one of us can't go, the city manager, or city attorney, or somebody?
Oh.
So, you know how to do all that stuff?
If we could have a motion for appointing Mayor Protem O'Neil to be the voting delegate, I think that would be-
So moved.
Second.
Okay. So, I call for a vote?
Can I vote for myself, or is it all?
Yes.
You can vote for yourself.
Yeah, you can vote for yourself, Mike. There you go. All right, thank you very much. Oh, I guess I get to adjourn the meeting. Everybody stay safe. We almost got to 11, folks.